Good afternoon and welcome. This is a city commission work session for the city of Largo. It is August tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We have an exciting meeting this afternoon, but we're going to, and we're going to start with a business spotlight from something that sounds delicious.
Thank you. Hello there, city commissioners. Today I have with us Sean, owner of Jeremiah's Italian Ice, and Jamie, manager of the store location. They recently opened on July twenty-seventh, actually, at one three one zero zero Seminole Boulevard, Street one oh three, in the Seminole Retail Plaza across the street from Largo Mall. And they are serving some delicious treats.
Thank you. In two thousand and twenty-one, Jeremiah's was named one of Quick Service Restaurant Magazine's forty hottest casual concepts and ranked as a top food franchise and a new, a top new franchise by Entrepreneur Magazine. Without giving away too many details, I'll go ahead and ask our first question. Can you tell us more about Jeremiah's?
First, I would like to thank everyone for giving me that opportunity to be here. Thank you. Actually, Jeremiah Italian Ice is one of the hottest franchises in the U.S. They just started franchising about almost a year and a half ago, and I was introduced to the concept through my son, who currently goes to University of Florida. And at that time, I was, I'm an engineer myself by degree. I went to University of Florida. I graduated. I worked in the field for fifteen years as a project engineer for the Southeast Group. And I got introduced to Jeremiah, and I was in love. It's a great concept. So I ended up making that move from Orlando to Largo. We chose our first location just due to the fact that it's a family, because that kind of business, it's a family organized business, and kids, and high school. So, but Jeremiah is based on, we serve Italian ice. We also serve s- s- i- normal ice cream, which is vanilla and chocolate and swirl. And we have forty-plus flavors, and we target technically young people, high school, families. And we give free ice cream for dogs, actually, so, unlimited. And we have unlimited samples all day, so we, everyone could, the, I made a mistake today. I should have brought samples with me, so I apologize. Promise.
You can come back next month.
I'm sorry, honestly, I'm sorry, but everyone is invited. Anytime, we just opened on the twenty-seventh of August, and believe it or not, we have a line that reaches to the outside on a daily basis. So people, they are just, they've been waiting for us to open, and this is our first location in Penales County. My plans, because I own that territory for Penales County, so my plan, I'm gonna open up to five locations in entire Penales County. So we started with Largo. Hopefully, our second, second location is gonna be around Fourth Street, close to downtown San Pete. It's a little bit farther than, but I am so glad, I'm really happy to open in Largo. It's an amazing area, honestly, and the business is just, we had no idea, the expectation is great. People is coming on a day, but, believe it or not, I got a bad review, which is, we have five-star review right now, but one of the bad, which is one bad review, it said, "We don't like you because you're not open." So, exactly. You could see it until now. It says, "You're not open, so we're giving you that review." But we were five-star, all in every aspect of social media, to everything, we really have a great review, because we want, always, we build that business based on exceeding expectation, our customer expectation. Person who started that business out of Orlando in Winter Park, it was nineteen ninety-six, his name Jeremy, and he just started franchise about two years. They have about almost thirty-eight location in Orlando, and total of eighteen location all over the U.S. And that was the only territory that was available for me to purchase. So I ended up purchasing, and I moved from Orlando to here. But the concept is great, it's, the, the flavor is great. We, I invested just in one location. There's no hidden numbers, it's about almost more than two hundred fifty, two hundred sixty thousand dollars, just for the sake, we do make the ice on, in the house, actually. We have machine, just, just the machine by itself is about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. We make it fresh in the back, and we do it on a daily basis.
Great, yeah. So what would you say is customers' top favorite flavor?
Actually, most of the people like, like orange smash, but my favorite, I like pina colada, but, but no alcohol, by the way, so. We don't serve alcohol, just, exactly. So, I like orange smash, pina colada, we, blueberry limeade is great. It's, it's, it's really, I mean, all the flavor, honestly, I don't wanna, but I'm not the person that eat a lot of sugar.
Yeah.
I try to eat a little bit every day, so, because I exercise, I run every day, so.
Well, we'll just have to go and try all, like, Jeremiah's.
No, you, you guys, please, I, I told you, I made a mistake, I didn't bring samples today, but you guys are all invited. If I was invited for the second meeting, I promise, so I'm lifting my head. I'll bring as many samples as you guys want, so.
Great, so, our second question, and you talked a little about, you know, family and how you look really different demographics. So why did you choose Largo?
Largo, I'll leave it to Jamie, too.
Yeah, absolutely. So, because, you know, Jeremiah's is family oriented, and that's part of the reason why I joined as well, is because I'm a family man myself, is that they, they partnered with schools, they partner with local communities, you know, police, fire, and hospitals. Because of that primary reason, that's why I joined, and that's what our focus and our goal is moving forward.
And why did you choose Largo specifically, like, the area to open up?
Yes. We, usually, every time, again, like Jason, every time we open a location, we have to do a study before we, it's, everything's, you know, based on a study, the population, the income, the schools, and churches. Again, we're a big, big supporter, we do a lot of donation. I mean, we invest, even when we open, so, we invest ten to fifteen, twenty thousand dollars just, we provide, you know, coupon for churches, we do even with the schools. We, to each teacher, for each school, we provide them at least thirty free coupons for a small item, just for the sake, for them to give it to the student, if they do well in school. It just, it's not, for us, not marketing, I mean, not only we're marketing our product, but also we're promoting, you know, for the student to do well, and the teacher to help the student to grow. So we do, we do allow donation for churches also, we, so we technically, Largo was, after we did the study, target, Largo was a great place, based, it's a family oriented, and this is the most important, believe it or not, they, I'm sorry, it's coming off.
Oh, no.
So, believe it or not, Largo was selected out of, you know, downtown San Pete, all this stuff that, it's a, we have a Largo High School, we have a couple of elementary schools, it's a family oriented area, so we had to pick it up and move forward with this. But again, I'm opening more, opening another four to five location, and hopefully, you guys, you could help me locate these locations, so.
Yeah, that's wonderful. And so, being opening up for a little bit now, what are your challenges?
So, so far, some of our challenges have been staffing, marketing, what's the best way to market the brand, and partnering, again, with local schools, communities, you know, the police department, fire department, and hospitals, those have been the kind of the challenges we've been facing so far. And I like those, those are actually good challenges, I can deal with those.
Yeah. That's great. Well, I'm sure we can help you connect with some of the community partners and our different departments.
I want to add something.
Okay.
I mean, the great things, we have about twenty staff, so for each location, we tar, we hire twenty staff, based on the size, based on the, so, most of our staff, let's say eighty-five percent of our staff, they're young age, sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, so we help them technically to grow. And we're very flexible with the schedule, because these students, they have school, and, you know, they have to go to school in the morning, and maybe later in the day, they work for a couple of hours, just as an extra time, and they make extra money, so.
That's great, introducing them early on to the workforce.
Exactly, yes.
And developing those soft skills and communication skills, that's great. And so our last question, what can Largo do for you?
Bring me money.
I like his way, thank you.
The biggest thing is, of course, support, you know, the biggest support, it's, you know, more that you support us, or we give back to the community as well.
Great. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, but the new Largo location is open seven days a week, from eleven A.M. to eleven P.M.?
We just changed the hour as of yesterday at night, because now, due to the fact that school's gonna start on Wednesday, so we usually wanna, because, our hour usually eleven to eleven because of summer schedule, but now we changed it from eleven to ten, just we went back, because people has to, we, you know, wanna close early, because people has, student, they wanna go home, they wanna sleep, they have to go to school the next day.
Except for Friday and Saturday.
Except for Friday and Saturday. Actually, yesterday, we even, we changed the hour, but we tried to close at ten, and suddenly, at ten o'clock, honestly, I had about maybe thirty-five customer. And technically, even with our business, the way we do it, even if we have one customer, we have to stay open until then, if we cannot move the chair, we cannot move the umbrellas, we cannot do anything, we have to stay open. So yesterday, we end up, we're supposed to close at ten o'clock, we end up closing at eleven-thirty, unfortunately.
Wow. Well, for, unfortunately, but for a good reason, many customers, so.
Yes, yes, I agree.
Great. And then with that, I'll open up for any questions from our city commissioners.
Quick question, I, can you discuss again, working with schools? I, fortunately, not this year, but I had, and in the past, the president of my, my daughter's PTA, so, but I still, you know, if there's some opportunities to work with, with you guys and the, and the school, I'd be, you know, happy to get them in, in contact with you, so if you could just discuss that again.
That'd be great. Again, we are have, we have one program for school, which is, we provide coupon for students, free sample for each teacher, so he will give it to his student, as long as they're doing well in class.
Right.
So we have a meeting tomorrow at almost around four o'clock with, I think, Seminole High School.
That's correct.
Yes, so we're gonna meet with them, we're gonna present it, you know, this stuff, and we're gonna talk about the business. Again, we're big supporter of churches, high school, elementary school, just to make sure that, you know, wherever we could help, but also, we, you know, we do it as also part of marketing, we cannot lie about this, so.
Yeah, we have fundraisers, we offer things called, it's called Ice Night, which is like somewhat of a spirit night.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Obviously, so where they can come into the store, and they say they were from Seminole High School, and a percentage of the proceeds go back to the high school.
Okay.
So we do a lot of charity events, catering, of course, but fundraising, and I think Ice Night is gonna be, it's gonna be fun.
Can you guys leave me a card? I would be happy to pass that on to some folks at the store.
Yes, that'd be great.
And, and also, you were talking about your Google reviews, so I went and looked, and you are five-star rated, so fantastic. But I just wanted to comment on the mural you have in your store here, there's a picture of the Welcome to Largo sign.
Yes.
Mural inside, so, that's pretty cool, it's a really cool picture.
We have about eighty locations over the U.S., but this is the largest mural in the entire company.
Really? Well, we're happy to have that.
He had to do it by hand, it took him three days, each day was working fifteen hours to do it.
Really?
And we had to, again, we have to adapt to the city, which is city of Largo. We had, so people, you know, like, from the fire department, from the police department, they come and they, you know, they take a video, they take a picture of it.
It's really cool, I just wanted to make.
They wanna be part of that community, that's all.
No, yeah, and we absolutely appreciate you being a part of the community. I know my oldest daughter, growing up, worked at one of your all's competition, I guess I would say, another Italian ice place, we won't mention today, but, um.
They're all good, we don't wanna.
Well, yeah, no, but, so, yeah, obviously, in my family, we're big fans of Italian ice, so we're happy to have you here in Largo, and, and thank you for being a part of the community. That's really, you know, it means a lot when a, when a business doesn't just come in and try to, you know, be a moneymaker, obviously, that's your business, I get that, but it means a lot to us and, and the residents of Largo, when you actually integrate yourself into the community, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Other questions? I don't have a question, just, I, I love Italian ice, so I'm excited to come by and, and pay you guys a visit. I, I really appreciate the fact that you did, did research, and you wanted to go into a town like ours that's family oriented, and, and certainly, we, we go out of our way to make this a great place to, to raise a family, so, so I'm glad that you guys recognize that in your research as well.
Yes.
And welcome to Largo.
Thank you for having us, we appreciate it.
I'm excited to try.
And you guys, again, next time, I promise, invite me, I'll bring you, it's my fault, it was, it was a quick decision, but you're most welcome to come anytime, we're really, really, I mean, we're excited, I mean, and the things, every day we get more customer. And our system, like, which is our POS system, it recognize between existing customer or new customer, and the good things, we're having almost seventy percent new customer, which is great, because people there were waiting, because the closest location from Largo, it's in, in Tampa, so people, believe it or not, yesterday, I had a customer, I promise, he told me, I live in Virginia, I used to drive two hours to go to Jeremiah, just to have some Italian ice. So people from Largo used to go to Tampa location, and now they said, "We're happy, you're open, you're very close, so you could come anytime, and you guys, you open late." I'm happy to serve.
That's awesome. Well, thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They'll be open till eleven.
Yeah, maybe we'll see you in another hour or two. Let's hurry this thing up, so I can go get some ice.
We needed to go there last Tuesday.
Right, yeah, we should have gone, yeah, we got out of here, and they were still open.
At ten, cool down a little bit.
Yeah. Should just buy ice for everybody.
All right, our next item is a legislative update.
Again, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll wait for you guys to stop by, so.
I'll come by tonight.
Good afternoon. Alan and I have prepared a two thousand and twenty-one legislative update for you. As you can tell by the size of your memo pages there, that there were quite a few things affecting local government that passed this session. We kind of went through that list and picked five that we felt were the most consequential to Largo, and if you need additional details or have questions for something that we don't talk about, let me know, we'll get you that information. To start off with, Alan is gonna do a brief presentation on what preemption is.
First of all, I want to apologize, I really wish he brought the Italian ice, because it would sweeten you up before we have these two discussions about two topics that aren't nearly as fun as talking about Italian ice. So I thought it would be a good idea just to kind of do a, a brief discussion, and have a very short PowerPoint on preemption, because that is a very, a topic, I know you hear the word thrown around a lot, so let's kind of talk a little bit about what does it mean. And, this doesn't work. So, what is preemption? So, preemption generally, in the law, means that some higher authority, authority of law, in our case generally, state statute overrides local or lower authority of law, in this case, a city ordinance or city action, because the two laws conflict. There's two types of preemption, express and implied. So what is it, the Florida Constitution says, the Florida Constitution, you know, and you hear, another word you hear is home rule, so this is home rule. Cities may exercise any power for municipal purposes, except as otherwise provided by law. So that's preemption, right there, express, except as otherwise provided by law, that, that's, you have home rule, except as the legislature tells you, you don't. Preemption essentially takes a topic or a field, an entire field of law, which local government might otherwise have home rule powers, so that they can establish a local ordinance, and reserves that topic for the legislature. So when a state law explicitly precludes local government from acting, that's considered express preemption, and some of the bills that we'll talk about today expressly preempt the city from taking any action. So an example, this is an example from a state statute that relates to the regulation of firearms, you probably recall some of us talking about this some years ago, when the legislature adopted or expanded their regulation of firearms, or lack of regulation of firearms, but, and precluded local governments from taking action, and imposed penalties up to ten thousand dollars on any individual commissioner who voted for a firearm regulation. This is one example, another example is smoking, they have preempted any local regulation with regard to the prohibitive, prohibition of smoking indoors, for example. What's implied preemption? So implied preemption occurs when because of legislation that the legislature passes, it's impossible to simultaneously adopt a local law without conflicting with the state law. So if there's a local law and a state law, and somebody can comply with both, then there's no preemption. If they can't comply with the local law and also comply with the state law, then there's something called implied preemption. So one of the examples is the regulation of fireworks. You might recall that a lot of counties, including Penales County, had adopted regulation of fireworks, the legislature also had regulation of fireworks, this case that's referenced here, the Phantom of Clearwater case, was against Penales County concerning their regulation of fireworks, and whether their regulation was preempted through implied preemption. So again, just summary, there's two types of preemptions, the legislature expressly says, "We're reserving this entire field of regulation with regard to firearms to the state." Cities, counties, you cannot regulate this area at all, you have no home rule power with regard to that. The implied preemption is they, they go to the point where they regulate an area to the point where a city or county cannot adopt an ordinance that conflicts with that. Sometimes the legislature, not in recent history, but they used to do this more frequently, would adopt some regulation of an area and say, "But a city and county can be more restrictive." We don't see that very much lately, but we used to see that more regularly, so there's still some laws on the books where the legislature had previously adopted a statute that said, "Yes, we're gonna regulate this area, but city and counties, you can be more restrictive." So, just an example of implied preemption, let's just say there was a state law that required all cars must be hybrids, a local ordinance that provides that no car, no cars may be hybrids, that would be impliedly preempted, because you can't comply with both. Hopefully, that's a simple explanation, and that's, that's my little presentation on So with regard to the memo, and the, I'm gonna address the first couple of, thank you, first couple of, of bills, we are gonna do the first five, if you have the memo that I sent out, we're gonna do the first five of those bills, I'm gonna do the first three, and Chris is gonna do the second two. I tried to go through the memo and indicate where a preemption was, you know, where they preempted local regulation. I think Commissioner Robinson, Vice Mayor Robinson, asked me to kind of highlight that, so that's what, that, and when you see the word preemption there, that's just to tell you that this is an example of a bill that's preempting local regulation. So the first one is on home-based businesses, and I know you all can read this, so I'm gonna kind of go through this quickly and just really more leave it to questions, but generally, this bill prohibits local governments from enacting or enforcing our existing ordinance or, or new ordinances that regulate home-based business, except in very specific limited circumstances now. The legislature determined that home-based businesses are to be able to operate in an area where residential uses are permitted, to qualify a home-based business, they must, the, the, the business must be secondary to the residential use, so it has to be used, it does have to be used as a home. The employees of the business must reside in the dw, in the residential dwelling, except for up to two employees who can be outside workers, and it allows employees to work remotely. With regard to parking, which is a concern that I know that community standards deals with, with home-based businesses, the need for parking generated by the business may not be greater than would normally be expected at a similar residence, whatever that means, where no business is conducted. They must park in legal spaces, we can regulate the use of vehicles or trailers operated or parked at the, at the residence. Generally, that's the, the new law on home-based business, it does preempt us, and we will have to amend our existing ordinance on regulating home-based business to comply with the statute. Tracy is here and can probably address any specific questions about how it'll affect their operations. Second, Bill Code Enforcement, this is the one that prohibits code enforcement from enforcing a local ordinance based upon anonymous complaint. Basically, it requires us to have the name and address of the person making a complaint in order for community standards to pursue enforcement through code enforcement action. This does not prohibit a code enforcement officer, community standards officer, from seeing a violation and enforcing the code, just merely if, if you get, if they get an anonymous complaint. The one exception is if there's an imminent threat to public health, safety, or welfare, and anonymous complaint can be the reason to instigate a code enforcement action.
Alan, can I interrupt for one second, please? If the person reports a violation, gives her name and address, is the city obligated to make that public?
It then is, yes, that information would be a public record, if somebody made a public records request, we would have to produce that information.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
And then, so one of the things I thought was interesting, I don't know if you, if everybody or any of you saw the article that was in the paper. There was an article in the paper about this bill where they spoke to the sponsor about why or what was the reason behind the bill. And I'm just going to read her quote. "Our code enforcement resources are scarce in many places, and this, I think, will better target and focus complaints on disputes that are legitimate." So she phrased it as one helping municipalities. And on the heels of talking about preemption, that is an issue that shouldn't be left up for local government to decide. I guess I'm on the wrong side of things, but that seems to me, that's a whole room determination that you all should be making, not some legislator who probably does not receive any calls from constituents about code enforcement issues, which you all do get. But that's my editorializing. Impact fees doesn't come before you too often that we're in a position of raising impact fees, but this is also, you know, an issue where they've restricted now the ability you have to increase impact fees. So one thing that we tend to do a lot of times is we let fees sit and we don't review them all that often. And then we come back years later and say, oh, this should be updated. And sometimes they're reduced, like I think we reduced the recreational impact fees some years ago, but sometimes we haven't kept up and then we have to increase the fees. This is almost an incentive to do more frequent increases and not leave it for big increases because there's a limitation on the, on increases. So an increase can increase an impact fee of not more than 25% of the current rate in two equal annual increments. If the rate, the increase rate is between 25 and 50%, the increase must be implemented in four installments. You can't increase any impact fee more than 50% from the current impact fee rate. And you cannot increase an impact fee more than once every four years. So it might behoove us to review the fees every four years, at least, or sooner, so that if we do need to increase them, we're not necessarily running into these restrictions. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
I'm going to skip over the next one and come back to House Bill 1. I think that one will probably generate the most discussion. I'm going to go to Senate Bill 2512. This was an act relating to documentary stamp tax distributions. This was the funding bill for affordable housing programs in Florida, better known as the Sodowsky Housing Trust Fund. Some key provisions of this bill, it does allocate $200 million to affordable housing programs statewide. This is the highest allocation since 2008 and also marks the first time since 2012 that the legislature did not sweep funds for other purposes not mentioned in the act. They also limited their ability to sweep funds in the future. So that was a key provision that a lot of people fought for to keep that fund intact for affordable housing programs. What does it mean for Largo? It will be a large boost in available funds. Just for comparison purposes, in 2019, the city received $146,000. In 2020, it was not funded, so we got zero. And as Earl Woodard mentioned at last week's meeting in 2021, our allocation is $560,000. So it was a significant boost for affordable housing programs, which is a priority for the city. Another program that was created in this bill was the Resilient Florida Trust Fund, and it allocates $111 million to that. This provides grants to municipalities for planning and mitigation activities related to sea level rise. And there is a grant application in the works by the city, by our Sustainability Administrator, Laura Thomas, to update our resiliency plan and also to conduct vulnerability assessments for perils of flood. That was Senate Bill 2512. Moving along to House Bill 1, probably the one you heard the most about, probably the most controversial bill of the session. This was an act relating to combating public disorder, also known, you heard it referred to as the riot bill. There was a lot in this bill, a lot to do with cities, mainly with police budgets. It basically provides a mechanism that, under certain circumstances, the state could take over a city budget. The way the bill ended up and the way it started were very different. Originally, it could have been anyone could have filed a complaint to basically appeal the reduction, the operating budget of a law enforcement agency. And the final version restricted that to only members of a commission, a council, or the state attorney. So that was something that I know Florida League of Cities really fought hard to get in there, and we're very pleased about that. Another portion of that bill, civil liability, it removes sovereign immunity for cities if it is found that a city or anyone authorized by a city interferes with law enforcement response to riots. And that would remove the sovereign immunity for property damage, personal injuries, or wrongful deaths stemming from riots. And I don't know if you're interested in the process of how this would play out, the state taking over a city's police budget. I can go through that if you'd like. It's not happened yet, so there's a lot of questions out there. The statute is probably intentionally vague. So until it plays out, we really don't know. I did see where the city of Gainesville is taking the lead in challenging this in court. I think they voted last week to do that. So they're, I haven't heard the last of House Bill 1.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any, can I, I don't have any questions. Thank you for the review. I just feel like I'm just banging my head against the door, so I'm not going to continue to make comments that I made the entire, every legislative session since I've been elected. So, yeah, thank you for the review. I think it's, it's good for us to understand somehow some of these things can affect us so we kind of have a good idea, you know, ways to move forward. Appreciate you guys, again, keeping us up to date with that and hopefully this next session will be a little bit different.
Please, go ahead.
Relating to the home rule one, not home rule, home businesses, did they provide a list of what is considered home-based businesses?
No, I mean, it's based upon that being the, it's not the type of business, it's the way the business operates. It's got to be employees that generally live at the home. You know, there's no trailers that park there, the number of cars has to be somewhat limited. So it's, it's those type of operational issues that define what a home-based business is. It's not what the businesses do.
Okay, so we could still, like, the hours they operate?
Hmm, I don't think we can anymore regulate the hours they operate.
Yeah, no different than you would do in a commercial.
Right. So in my understanding, if I may, and Alan, you're obviously the attorney, not me, but my understanding is that it can be a business, any type of business, as long as that they don't, there's not too many cars there, there's not trailers blocking the street, but, and maybe I think I'd heard something about odors, like foul odors and stuff, and, you know. But other than that, it doesn't matter.
All right, we can basically, we have some rights over regulating parking. We can regulate signage and then the equipment that might be at the site. And noise, vibration, heat, smoke, dust, glare, fumes, pernicious odors. That's basically what we can regulate now.
Thanks, Dan, sorry.
And then the code enforcement ones, now that, we've already kind of had a citizen who came to us about something like this to a point recently. How are we dealing with a resident when they do want to file one? Are we informing them that this is now a public record? Or are we putting it on their website before they?
So to answer your question, we're doing it a couple ways. We didn't get much notice, the governor waited until right to the last second to pass, to sign off on this law. So we have, I think we had about 30, 35 hours to change our website, which I had Brandon Graham ready to go on that. So as soon as we were notified that the law had been signed, we changed that. If you go onto our website now, you'll see clear description of the statute, what the requirements are, that they do now have to provide that information. We do talk about the very limited other option, if it's an imminent threat to public safety, health, you know, natural resources. Again, that's on there as well. Currently, right now, if somebody does want to try to remain anonymous, and we had one yesterday as an example, that wanted to report what we believed was an imminent threat to habitat or natural resources, but they wanted to remain anonymous, all of those go through me. And I'm doing that currently right now to protect the rest of the staff, that if there is a decision that has to be made that possibly could violate the new statute, that it's on me and not on one of my team. There is a, some language in the law that specifically talks about liability if we don't comply with the, that new statutory requirement as far as anonymous or what it is. So the case yesterday happened to be four trees being cut down. We would, since the state didn't describe what natural resources are, certainly in our mind, a tree is a natural resource, it's habitat, so it might fall into both those. So we responded out to that case. It was in fact a code violation with an unpermitted four trees being removed, and we addressed that and stopped it, and they applied for their permit today. The staff has been trained. We, we had an emergency training the day before with all the team, mostly the call takers, my, my two staff assistants to help us. They handled 99% of the phone calls that come in, and they were trained on the appropriate question and now the notification. We've had 26, we're going to call complaints where people have refused to provide the information as required by law. They've hung up on us, they yelled at us, they just said, no, thank you. Either way, we are, we are documenting those. We created a new dropdown and a new statistical area that we can catch out of our database. So as of July 1, there's been 26 that wanted to make a complaint, but when they were told about the new law, they refused to provide the information. We've had several try to circumvent the city's website and provide false information, fake information, obviously fake information. We are not accepting those. We're, we have created a paragraph that explains why we didn't accept it, and we're adding that to the case notes and saying that it didn't comply with the new law and that we couldn't do it. We're doing everything we can to try to track it. We knew there was, once this happened, 99% of all code violations were always reported anonymously. It's just the way it was. People just didn't want, you know, their neighbors to know they were calling them, and that's understandable. And we were okay with that because we'd take them any way we can get them, because some of these violations were pretty bad that people were reporting on their neighbors.
And if you went out there and there was no violation to an anonymous complaint, what would happen?
We entered it as a complaint, and there's a dropdown that said, no violation observed, and we would have closed it.
Nothing would happen.
Nothing would have happened.
You'd make a decision as a professional in code enforcement.
Based on our investigation, if there was nothing there, we would have closed it out, and that happens occasionally. What has happened with, you know, some of these cases is, we knew there was going to be a reduction of people being able to report it on the website or calling into the staff, mailing them in. We, we used to get a lot of mail, generic, you know, no return address, just a handwritten note from a resident asking us to look at something. Unfortunately, those are, can't be accepted, they're scanned into the system and, again, not investigated because they don't meet the statutory requirements, unless it's an imminent threat, as described before.
Hey Tracy, what percentage of the normal calls that you would receive right now are people refusing or that you can't follow up on?
Well, I pulled some stats, I knew you'd ask that question. So for complaints coming through the city website, we don't have data for 19 because there was a changeover of the system, so we lost the 19 data, but we have 20, to compare 20 against 21. For July, which is when the law started, July, the month of July 2020, we had 68 cases reported through the city website. Same time this year, we had 29. So that's a 58% decrease in complaints. I tried to look at the phone calls. We have a new, we'll call it a newer phone system now. We can't track calls coming in and coming out. The data is difficult to break down because there's so many internal phone calls. If I ask my staff, they'll tell you that phone calls are ringing a lot more because they're going to the website, they're now seeing this alert that says you have to provide your information, and they're trying to call into Community Standards and get around that. Of course, the staff is asking the right questions, sometimes they provide it, sometimes they don't. Self-initiated is where we are trying to change this. I know the legislator that sponsored the bill said, you know, our, our staff is limited and certainly ours is as well. But the direction I gave my team is that we knew going in, as soon as they pulled the trigger, and we'd been monitoring this, as Chris knows, we'd been monitoring this for at least two months, prepping that this bill was probably going to get signed by the governor. It just felt like it was going to go that way. So we had been prepping the team about we're going to have to change our business model. Historically, because of the amount of staff we have and the amount of complaints that come on a regular basis, the reality is most of our calls were a response to a complaint. We were call-driven a lot of times. And if an officer saw something self-initiated, that was a smaller percentage. So in 2019, in the month of July only, we had 193 cases. Of those 193, 62 of them, or 33%, were self-initiated. In 2020, we had 157, 36 were self-initiated, so there's only 23%. But this first month of this year since the law has passed, we've had 201 cases, so we've actually created more cases than we had before, and the self-initiation is at 94 or 47%. So we've almost doubled over the last two years our self-initiated activity. Because the reality is, the complaints are there, the violations are out there. You and I could drive around most roads, we could find code violations. So if the citizens can't report or won't report now, we have an obligation to go out and find them if they're out there. So you're seeing code officers are much more active in the community now, down inside the neighborhoods, because if we're not receiving those complaints to the residents through any way, we're, we're going out and trying to self-initiate that. It's a little bit different business model. Some of the residents aren't always as happy to see us coming out, they want to know who called, and we explain to them, nobody called, we were driving by and we observed this violation, we're asking you to correct it. But what I did want you to know is, there has not been a decrease in the amount of cases that we're working, or actually it's been increased in the first month. The encouraging news is, I can tell you for the first 10 days of August, is that we appear to be back to a more normal city website complaint where the residents are actually providing their information again. So I think they've come to a point where, okay, the world, you know, the sky's not falling and they, they actually are complying with the statute, which is encouraging that they're getting back into it. So again, we'll take it any way we can get it, you know, we just have to follow the new law. The law is pretty tough, it's pretty restrictive. What is considered an imminent threat? That's a, that's a pretty narrow, you know, exemption for them not to report their names. And the law is very silent on a number of things. You know, if a law enforcement officer calls and he says, well, my property is protected by public record, and I want to call on my neighbor about their high grass, well, the law is silent on that, the new statute is silent on that. Their address is protected, we might not, we'll protect their address, but we still have to list their name because the law says they have to provide their name and address. So then we'll follow through the other law that says their address is protected from public record, and we put big notes in the system saying this is exempt property or public records exempt information, but it's, there are some challenges to it that we're still working through 40 days into the law. But we're getting there. I don't think too much is changing.
I got a question. Let's say hypothetically, somebody shows up at Mayor Brown's coffee with the mayor and says, boy, you ought to see this property at whatever address, and take a drive-by there. So the mayor drives by based on this anonymous complaint and sees a code violation of trash and debris, and he becomes a complainant. Does that, does that circumvent that?
That's probably the easy answer, yes, he does. If the complaint came from the mayor's office, now a lot of times, as the, you know, the elected officials, you report this down to Mr. Schubert, and then he reports it, so Mr. Schubert might be the complaintant. I like it. Keeps me anonymous.
I'm glad Tracy thinks that's such an easy question. I don't think it's quite easy. And I know it's a semi that question that the mayor asked me a month or so ago.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically.
Asking for a friend.
I think that's how we should treat it, how Tracy said. I'm not sure, you know, the law's pretty vague on that, it's a very, it's a very short bill.
But we, that's a, that's a weekly occurrence for all of us.
Right, right. And I, I agree, I think we should just treat you then all as the complaint party and proceed that way.
But if I run it through Henry and it goes to someone Henry's, we just put
But, if I run it through Henry and it goes to, it's on Henry's, we just put his address on there?
Well, his address will be 201 Highlands Avenue.
It, it says, "A code inspector can't initiate a complaint," um, source, so that doesn't mean, you know, um, you can't initiate a complaint.
And frankly, even before this law, nine times out of 10, I would drive down, drive, you know, almost every coffee, there's a couple complaints about something. I'd drive by on the way home, and, and if it looked like it was something that Tracy needed to know about, I'd let him know about it. If it didn't, I would, I would get back in touch with that person and say, "Yeah, I drove by there. I'm not sure what you're asking about." So, I wasn't necessarily dealing with it, other than going out and looking. So, I would feel comfortable saying, you know, "This is a complaint that I'm generating" because I went out and verified it and made sure that it was...
Right. The one, the one we had yesterday with, or this weekend with a gentleman was adamant, he didn't want us, he, he sent an email, obviously to the, to the commission, public record, which is obviously in itself is, puts him out there, but he didn't want us to put his information, but I have to if he wants to make, made the complaint.
Well, I, I drove by there today, and it's a valid complaint.
Yeah, there's two of them there. One of them's in compliance now, but the other one, it obviously is significant, and that's going, that's already set for code board, which is good news. You know, we're only two weeks away from getting that in front of the code board, so that's, we're way ahead of the game with that one. So, that helps a lot.
Now, if it does come from the mayor, it would come not from our personal address, it would come from, as the commissioner. If I had a citizen that called, reached out to me, and I went and inspected, and I came and said, "This was bad, and I want to file," it would be...
So, it would be under your name with this address, the city hall's address.
So, so, and I asked the city attorney this, um, as well. So, we have solid waste drivers that are out on the road every day. They're in front of every house in this, in this city every day, every, you know, twice a week. So, they, they might see a car that's blocking access to pick up a trash can that doesn't have a tag, and it's got spider webs from this road to the car. So, it's probably not working. So, they can, they call that in. That doesn't go to their, their name doesn't go on that complaint, am I right?
Yes, it does.
So, it's not a citizen, I mean, it's, it's a...
It doesn't say citizen. It says, it says the reporting person.
If yourself, if you go out there on your own patrol...
Self-initiated.
And then, is your name and address on there?
No. So, in that case, it's allowable by the new law or, or the amendments to the law? So, what we've done is, we've created in our, we didn't have this in Tracket before. Tracket's our land management system. We didn't have a self-initiated button to capture that. Prior to the law, we changed that, and we've created now a dropdown. So, when you're gonna see three different ways it can be reported on our system. One is self-initiated. So, if the officer does self-initiate, and they now go into the dropdown, they click self-initiated, that shows that it's a self-initiated investigation. There'll be no complaint and information. Two, the person provides the information required by law, you're gonna see them now in the complaint and information. We've added several police officers and city, city employees in the last couple of weeks that made complaints. And the last one would be if it fell into that imminent threat, where they're allowed to remain anonymous. In that case, we'd have that paragraph that we've created that shows that it did, what we believe met the statutory requirements to be reported anonymously as an imminent threat, that would be documented. So, those are the three ways that we'll capture and comply with the state statute to make sure we're doing everything we're supposed to do.
So, I would ask that the city attorney, I know this is all kinda gray, but I would ask the city attorney that if, if, if a city employee sees something that is reportable code violation, see if we need to include their name on that, on that, because if we don't need to, I don't think we should. And I know you don't, you may not have an answer right now, but...
Well, I don't think we're getting, there's nothing that's gonna help us anytime soon to give you an answer. I mean, it, it says they can't, a code inspector can't initiate enforcement action by way of an anonymous complaint. So, I think, and I, I think I would be with, with what Mr. Scoville said, said, an employee, if they see an violation, whether they're driving a sanitation truck or a public parks truck, that we have to take their name and use the city's address as their address.
So, I'm sorry, may I? So, um, long-term, Tracy, do you, obviously, we haven't seen, you know, year-to-date or this month, any type of a cooling effect. Actually, you, you, you guys have been out there and, and been more proactive. Long-term, though, do you see any type of cooling effect from, from, you know, people obviously who want to remain anonymous because it's their neighbor or whoever it might be, and they're, they're just, you don't wanna get into those confrontations because somebody hasn't mowed their grass in a month? Do you see any type of cooling effect from it long-term?
I do, and, and I, and I think we've probably already seen, so we, we're gonna lose some, some cases that we're not gonna be aware of, that the neighbors just gonna be afraid to call on their neighbor. And I, you know, I think with the legislators, I don't know how much thought, they, they certainly didn't talk to FACE, which is the Florida Association of Code Enforcement.
Do you wanna know my opinion on that, or we, we'd, go ahead?
Yeah, they, they certainly didn't talk to, to FACE, the professionals that do this every day, and, and ask our opinion about how do we apply the law, you know, here in the, the type of cases we're gonna lose. You know, they certainly were trying to catch the shotgunning, and, and we were victims of that, too. We would come in on Monday mornings, and maybe we issued a notice of violation for somebody for a boat or a trailer or high grass, and they spent the weekend driving around the city of Largo, and they'd put in 15 cases in their neighborhood, which we would go and investigate, but they were all anonymous, and they were all the same exact verbiage, just shotgunned us and just blasted us, and, and we'd take, you know, four or five days to get caught up on that. That law certain, has changed that. Again, I think we're gonna lose some cases. There are other people that step up, though. There seems to be, in a lot of our neighborhoods, that person that's not afraid to make that report. So, these neighbors that might be afraid to go to the, you know, and report it on their neighbors are having conversations with the people that in the neighborhoods that aren't afraid. So, we are having, and we have had before, we've had one person sort of being the voice for a certain block or a certain neighborhood and basically taking it on themselves, and we'll, we appreciate that because if not...
We could do that in a media area as well, right? In all of us, if somebody just calls us up, 'cause I'm, I get all kinds of cool emails all week, so I don't care if somebody knows I'm calling.
Again, the reporter, whoever's calling it in to us or, or making that report, we need to have their information. So, how it gets there, if we wanna do it second party, third party, the statute's vague on that, so it's, my opinion, it's allowable, as long as we can provide the information into our, our system.
So, on the website where we're talking about the new, the new rule and it can't be anonymous, are we listing the name of the bill sponsor and their address?
Yeah, they don't wanna be anonymous, right? We should definitely put that in there.
I'm kinda serious.
I'm not, I'm being serious, too.
Because people are mad at us. They're mad at us about the fact that...
Well, again, it's just not the sponsors. Obviously, the legislators all voted for it, or most of them voted for it. This one, the, the home, the home base business had a little bit more contention, obviously, but this was, this got passed very quickly. There wasn't a lot of resistance on it.
Do we indicate on our website that, that people cannot file a complaint anonymously because of a state statute?
We didn't say they can't. We said, effective this date, the statute now requires...
Okay, that's, okay.
Is there any way to protect, like, the city employees, like, maybe just using their, like, their ID number rather than their name? Or it has, it has to be a name?
Actually, doesn't give us, doesn't give us a way of doing that. Again, it's, like Alan said, it's very short.
So, basically, what we're doing is basically saying now, if there's an employee or somebody who wants to remain anonymous, it's basically coming back to us now, the way that we're presenting this, that they can come to us, and then we can...
And I think you have to go to the site and see the violation.
And see yourself.
And then you be the complainant party.
I mean, in the past, if I got one, um, that I was out on, I was, one of my officers listed me as the complainant today. And I'm a code officer, I'm a certified level-three code officer, but I was the complainant to one of my zone officers. I asked them to take a look at it, but I was the complainant. They put me in as the complainant. And in, in the past, that might've just received a complaint from police department, received a complaint from solid waste, investigated and solved that, but now it's, and I've talked to some of the managers of some of the other departments, divisions in the city, especially solid waste. We have a code officer that's assigned. Officer Barkman's assigned full-time. Chuck's handling most of these. He's taken those, and he's being the complainant if it has to be transferred from solid waste. Because some of these have solid waste violations, but they have much, the, the address, you went and looked at today, the 427 Fifth, has a lot more than just trash. So, that wasn't just a solid waste issue. So, that got transferred over to our team as well to take a look at. So, in that case, Chuck's the complainant on that, or Sean Clark, one of the supervisors that's over there, has taken that. The police department, we've, again, we've listed probably, in the last month, probably three or four police officers that have made complaints to us. We've listed them as Officer Smith, we'll say, and with the PD's address as, as their address.
All right.
One other ramification of the bill that isn't necessarily in the bill, but you heard Tracy say that one of the things we're doing is basically more self-initiated by code inspectors. So, the, the ramification of that is, uh, when somebody contests a code enforcement violation, the first thing they argue is something called selective enforcement, that you're enforcing this, this ordinance against me, and you're not, and, and there's 30 neighbors of mine that have the same violation. Case law says that if you're, if you're enforcing the code based upon a complaint, and you enforce all complaints, and that's all you do, then you, that's a defense to selective enforcement. But, once you start self-inspecting and self, you know, really having a program where you're investigating a lot of self-made complaints, that defense on selective enforcement is gonna become weaker. So, um, one of the ramifications is this, is those complaints that we get into litigation on, and we do occasionally get into cases where people either appeal a code enforcement board ruling or a special magistrate ruling, or a couple of people that we've had to sue because even after we've gone through the process, they haven't come into compliance, they always argue selective enforcement. They get a lawyer, and that's the first thing they argue. And it's gonna be a little bit harder for us to defend those. It's gonna get more involved, and it's gonna become a, a harder process for us. So, that's on, on the other side, another ramification of this.
The best way we can handle that is, one, through training, train the staff that, you know, how we treat everybody fairly. That exact topic came up today when I was standing in a yard, being told that we were selectively enforcing vote-in-the-setback rule. And, you know, I addressed that, that code officer had issued, had received a valid complaint with a, a valid complaint on one, but when that officer was in the area, they observed three other violations that were the same, and felt it was appropriate, if you're gonna write one in the same block, that we need to address all the violations they observed. So, they issued three verbal warnings or four verbal warnings in total, and that was explained to the, the person that was unhappy today. But, we do hear that. And the other thing that went, when Alan addresses these with me and says, you know, "We need this," is through data. We've created at least 15 new subtitles that give us a little bit more information about the type of complaint. It's hard when you look at chapter 11 dash 47, what does that really mean? So, that covers a lot of things in the ordinance. So, in this subtitle, it might be, just say, "Trees," or "Junk, Trash and Debris," JTW, "Inop." And then, so when we have a complaint or, or a challenge that says this was selective, you know, the city attorney's office will have the ability to ask us to pull data. How many inops did you write this year? How many fence cases, boats in the, so we, we have a, at least a starting point, something to try to show that we're not being selective enforcement, that we're being fair and, and partial with everybody. I mean, really, that's about the best we can do is training and data.
And I think you just kind of referenced it. That reminds me of the last month already, was it the, in July? The case regarding the boat where the individual was saying, "I've had it there for 10, I don't know, 10 years."
I think the response was three years today, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but you know, yeah, right. And he said, "And everybody else does, too, so how come in 10 years it just became an issue today?" Is that, I mean, kinda the same thing? Because then, I don't, I think that you had talked and said that, um, you know, as a proactive, being proactive and, you know, ma- maybe the other 20 people in your, in your vicinity, they all got noticed, too, because whoever called was out there. And so, is that a way that it wouldn't be? What, what you're saying, the selective, yeah?
I mean, that's just, just because somebody's getting away with violation of an ordinance doesn't mean it's right. It's like, "I've been selling cocaine for 20 years, and now you arrested me. Why is it illegal today?"
And I don't know if I'd put that out for everybody.
And, and just for those people listening, I'm not selling cocaine.
Anymore.
Not after today, you're not. Code enforcement caught up.
Tracy, just, just, because we, we've talked a lot about violations and, and, and our challenges that this, this puts on us and on you guys especially, but can you tell, just for people that might be watching, the vast majority of the cases, whether it's self-initiated or following a complaint, you go there and they have a certain amount of time to correct it. The vast majority of them correct it in that time and never really go past that. Is that correct?
That's correct. Last year was 92%.
And what's that amount of time? Like, if, if there's a car that's inoperable in front of a house?
If it's a first time, and we can check in our database and see if this has been sort of a, the, the person I was with today, they had the same violation three months ago. So, we updated a little bit in this one, we issued a notice of violation. But generally, if it's a first time, we have a lot of high grass ones right now. Most of my officers are out right now, they're issuing just seven-day courtesy notices. It's not even an official notice of violation yet, so the clock's really not ticking. It's a notice, but it's not official notice of violation.
Hey, I'm gonna come back in seven days.
We're hanging a door hanger. Please take care of this for the next seven days. Again, overwhelmingly, that's taken care of before we get back in, in seven days. If they do not comply, then we issue the notice of violation. Currently, right now, we've got that at a minimum of 10 days. So, that person was seven days plus another 10. Now, we're 17 days into it, it's already asking them to comply. If they don't, or they communicate with us, that's where we have a lot of flexibility and discretion to work with the residents, to give them extended amount of time. They were in the middle of mowing the grass, we could see it was half-mowed, their lawnmower died. They need an extra week to do this. Their son's coming in from out of state, he's gonna mow it or take care of it or haul all this stuff away in the next couple of days. As long as they communicate with us, we're more than happy to keep working with them. It's when they, they shut down on us, they ignore us, they don't answer our calls, they, they won't come to the door, then it, it has to go more formal. Notice of violation, code board or magistrate, and it starts to go through those processes. But, very few of the cases, we handle, you know, on average, about 3,000 cases a year, and less than 10% of those go to code board or magistrate. It's a very small number. It, it looks like it's a lot, and sometimes it is. But, most of our residents understand it, they get it. It usually is just, we just need a little bit more time, or, as we know, a lot of folks have been out of work and things like that. That's where we kicked into the Angel Fund, and, you know, there's, there's a lot of programs out there, but we, we are absolutely willing to work with these folks. Writing, being the hammer, the hammer being the NOVs or the fines or citations, is the easiest thing we do in code enforcement, but it should be the last thing we do in code enforcement. There's, it's that building that relationship and talking to people and just ask, just pick up the phone and talk to us when we leave a card or leave something, so we can communicate with them, and, and we'll, we'll get them through it. The goal is to bring them in, the compliance. It's not to be any worse than that if we can help it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
It's, it's more of a statement. First of all, excellent presentation on, on, we got focused on code enforcement, but it's really about preambitions here. And I would just say that these sorts of briefings that we get and these updates are valuable to us as we interact with state legislators and the League of Cities. You can see some of the work that was done by the Florida League of Cities and the, and the Suncoast League reflected in what didn't happen here. But, I appreciate, we're, we're about to break in some new state legislators, I think, in the near future, and what, what really has an impact in those conversations is these sorts of stories about how it affects the city of Largo, not, not the broad topic of home rule or, you know, these, these sorts of actions by the legislature. But, what did it do to us? Or what will it do to us as its proposed legislation? So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Robinson touched on this, but I would implore, if you're a state legislator or hoping to be one, you might want to check with the folks that will be affected by the legislation that you're trying to pass before you put it forward. I think that's kind of been absent in a lot of conversations, from not just cities, but different professions, et cetera. They are presenting legislation based on one instance that happened in their town, and now they're trying to make that the same for every city and every resident in the state of Florida, and that's a problem. I'd like to get away from that. I encourage anybody that's going to be up in Tallahassee to think about that when they're presenting stuff.
I have.
Hi.
You or me?
You go ahead.
Okay. I do have a question. This isn't about any of the items that we discussed, that you or Chris discussed here. There was a legislation that was passed and signed concerning gray water. And I asked this question, and I haven't been able to get an answer to it. So, the statute mandates that a city or a municipality must offer either a 25% or a 35% density bonus based on the installation of a gray water systems in developments, I think of 25 homes or more, 25 residences or more. And if they install those systems in 75% of those residences, then the city has to give a 25% density bonus. And if it's at 100%, then the city has to give, I think, a 30% or 35% density bonus. So, my question with all that is, are those incentives stackable? So, if we give a 30% density bonus, and then somebody says, "Well, I'm going to, you know, I'm going to also do affordable housing in 25% of my residences, and it's going to be extremely low," and then we, and you know, and the city has an incentive for that, can they stack those?
Just had a discussion with Mr. Schubert about that. So, I don't believe there's anything.
So did I.
That's probably why, I just, I don't think there's anything in the bill. I need to go back and look at the bill, I don't have a copy of the bill with me, I just have the summary. I don't think there's anything in the bill that addresses that. And generally, what you're going to find is that's probably going to be regulated by, in our case, the countywide rules, or the CDC. Because a lot of times, the countywide rules provide, even when there's a density bonus, there's a maximum density. So, let's say, like, there's a maximum density of 30 units per acre, so they might be able to stack the bonuses up to 30 units per acre, but they can never get more than 30 units per acre. But, the way that the countywide rules, and Lisa's here too, she might be able to help me out, but as I recall, many of the countywide rules are written, that when you, like, for example, get an affordable housing density bonus, the bonus and the max kind of match each other, so that you can, if you get the bonus, you get to the max. So, I think what's going to end up happening is that max is going to prevent the stacking. But, we can go back and take a more in-depth look at that, but I don't believe the bill addresses it. I think it's silent on that. So, I think it's probably going to be controlled by the more general restriction in the countywide rules.
I was concerned, and I would like to know more about this, because I was concerned that if a developer is going to put in a gray water system, he takes a look, and he says, "I can do a gray water system in 100% of these things and get a 35% density bonus, and I can keep this entire development at market rate, and maybe kick up the rent a little bit to pay for this thing. My payback in this is a whole lot better than committing the 30 years of affordable." And I'm really concerned about, you know, what's that going to do to a developer who's in business to make a profit? What's that going to do to his thinking about what he wants to build on property?
It's going to give some developers incentive to do gray water instead of doing affordable housing?
Yeah, well, I don't like that. I don't know how others people feel, but I don't know why the legislature decided to go do something like that. But, I would like to learn more, so I would know what our options are.
We can take a more in-depth look at it.
Thank you.
Just the part where you said that you included that it was a state statute that changed, that you put on the website? Could you include maybe that the governor signed this? Because I'm just saying that it's saying that it's a statute, it makes people still think it's the cities that changed this, but if we put them, so, clear wording that it was signed by the governor?
I can certainly say, put something under that says, you know, that it was, I can figure that it'll be that first sentence.
A Florida statute, I think it's pretty clear. It's passed by the legislature and signed by the governor if it's passed.
Do we want to put which local legislators have voted for it?
Well, it's sort of redundant, if you say state statute, it's all those things.
Right.
It is in there, and maybe, you know, probably the best thing to do is maybe if you want to take a look at it, and it's, if you just go on the community standards, there's a couple of hot buttons. One is to report a code violation, and when you click on that, it will, first thing you're going to see is that, those statements, and then we now have required fields, which used to be optional, are now required fields they have to fill in, and, but it's on there, both there's two, we have two hot buttons. One is reported in the abandoned derelict building, and there's another one to make a code complaint, and both have the same language on it.
And the last one I have was the HB1. So, to clear my mind, man, let's say we decided as a city, majority of us, said that we only needed, you know, we wanted to cut back on a police officer, or something like that, or some vehicles, or something like that, and there was a commissioner on this board that disagreed on it, they can file a complaint, and then it basically clicks it to the state to tell them back to tell us? So, how the process works, if that were to occur?
How the process works, if that were to occur, the appeal would go to the executive office of the governor, the city would have five days to respond. After that, there's a hearing that will take into account all the evidence, and then it would go to the administration commission, which is the governor's cabinet. They have been empowered to approve, modify, or deny the change, and their decision is final. So, that's how they would take over a city police budget.
So, that, if I may, so, and, sorry, Alan, for interrupting, but so if I, that would also include the next 2008 that comes up, and we have to reduce everybody's budget because we don't have the money to provide the services that we've been providing, that's going to fall into that circumstance as well. And that doesn't have to come, that could or could not come from a commissioner or the state attorney at that point, correct? So, that's a concern, right? Because we're going to have another, there's going to be another, you know, decline in what we're able to provide to services. And I have a lot of personal feelings on HB1 that we obviously don't need to discuss today, but, yeah, I mean, as it relates to the city, there will be times in the future where we have to lower the budget of all of the departments in this city, and that's the one that's going to get us in trouble. Literally, the governor, whoever it might be at that point, is going to be able to control what our budget is for the residents of the city of Largo. Fantastic job.
It seems, you know, and just to state the other side of that, is it's more about the notion of defunding the police. I mean, I get the intent, and all it does is trigger a review, and if you're in a municipality that has to reduce your entire budget by 10%, and you decide to do that across the board in each department, I mean, that's a review process. So, I'm not advocating for that, I'm just saying that's the other side of the court.
Right, so, but, you know, when...
There were some.
Defunding the police.
Around the country that were.
Around the country, but not in Florida.
I understand. I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that's where that came from.
No, I know exactly where it came from, and I know exactly why it was passed, because we have a governor who's going to decide to run for president for years. So, you know, obviously, he has to play to his base, but, you know, there has been zero circumstances inside the state of Florida, regardless of political action, regard, there's been zero circumstances where anybody has said they're going to defund the police in a municipal level. So, regardless of any of that, I'm going to take the politics out of it, the fact of the matter is that we, for, under no circumstance, from here moving forward, can we ever lower the budget of the police department? Not that we're trying to defund the police, but we're trying to provide better services in other areas, or whatever that might be, we can never, never, moving forward, decrease the budget in the police department.
Without justifying it to the governor and whoever the board is.
I think that's an oversimplification, with all due respect, because there is an investigative or review process in place, so I don't think you can say that you could never reduce a police budget. I mean, there probably are.
So, the process, though, now is taken out of the hands of the seven elected people in the city of Largo, and given to somebody who has zero idea of what happens here in the city of Largo.
Okay, well, I mean, we could have a discussion.
That's a specific, you know, John, John, excuse me, but you and I absolutely agree on the preemption of home rule.
Absolutely.
You know, and this is, this couldn't be more of a better example of preemption of home rule. And, you know, I absolutely respect your opinion and, you know, your history in the police department, so obviously, you do have a, probably a bit of a different opinion on it than I do, and, but, at the, you know, we can't hold off on this preemption can be okay when this preemption cannot be okay. Right? And if there's a process where somebody decides they want to quote-unquote "defund the police," then put that process in place. That's a whole different discussion than trying to change the budget, because, for example, what if we decide to take some of the mental health issues or services that are being provided right now by the police department, and give those to another department here in the city? So, that money then comes out of the police department. We're still using the same amount of money, providing the same service, but it goes from one department to the other department. Technically, it would have to then, or could possibly, go to that review process, which, again, takes the priorities and the decision-making of the elected officials in the city of Largo out of our hands. That's my concern. That's my concern.
You know, and again, I don't want to belabor the point, but this is now law, right?
It is.
So, we can debate the merits of it, but it's the law, so.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, yeah, I agree. So, but, that's my concern, though, right? I understand what the law is, but my concern is that we possibly could not have, you know, control over our own budget here in the city of Largo.
We don't have control over regulating home-based businesses, or?
No, I agree. I mean, we, yeah, we, it's, these are absolute issues that, you know, John, you and I have worked on for many years to try to alleviate some of these issues, so, I don't know, in a, yeah, nothing, John, against.
It's frustrating.
It is very frustrating.
And, who knows? I mean, I don't know that between, I don't think between 2007 and 2008, any budget actually, police budget actually went down at all. It stayed level, I believe, would be my guess. I'd have to look back. So, hopefully, it doesn't ever happen where we have to reduce anything, but to your point, you know, the special teams, we might move to a different area, or we might not. We might not move that money to a different area, simply because we have this legislation in place, and we can't. So, you know, it's, we have to get ahead of the state legislature and make them understand that they have a role in governance in the state of Florida, and it's not what we do here. We have a role, and we should aim to preserve that as much as possible, so. Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you very much for the update, and we've got one more item, and we can talk about some fun stuff.
Yes, eventually, we do get to the fun.
I told you, I wish you guys had, he brought you Italian ice.
I was going to say, that's meeting at Jeremiah's after the meeting.
I'm going to start out this item on the issue of COVID rules, and after I discuss the, what we're doing right now, and maybe some background information, then the city attorney's going to pick it up and talk about the legal parameters within which we have to operate. Just a little bit of background, currently, we have 41 employees that are currently today either have tested positive or in quarantine due to a significant exposure.
Can I interrupt? That's right now?
Right now.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and when I say right now, as of a couple hours ago.
Right.
So, because this is obviously a moving target, it changes every day. The countywide EMS system is stressed, it's a combination of increasing call volume, limited hospital capacity, there's also a labor shortage with regard to Sunstar, which the county's going to be addressing by providing additional funding to raise salaries for the paramedics and EMTs that work for Sunstar. So, we're in a situation right now, usually around 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, the call volume hits a point where if the fire department paramedics are going to a call utilizing a transport-capable unit, then they go ahead and do the transport to the hospital. The result of that is, is that a typical EMS call probably takes 20 to 30 minutes. If you have to take the patient to the hospital, obviously, there's transportation time to and from the hospital, plus added to that is the fact that in many cases, they cannot transfer the patient immediately from the ambulance to the hospital, there can be a considerable delay. So, that means that a, an EMS call that maybe would normally have taken 20 minutes, could take 90 minutes, could take a couple hours, or even longer, depending on the situation. So, what are we doing here in the city of Largo? Our employees right now, the rules that I've implemented is that employees must wear masks when inside and outside of their private workspaces. So, if they're outside of their office, or their cubicle, then they have, must be wearing a mask. Same rule applies to if they're in a vehicle with other employees. We are limiting the size of meetings for employees, we're adhering to social distancing as much as possible. Many of our meetings are conducted virtually again, and we've instituted this quite a while ago, but whenever we do have a meeting with city employees, we also have a virtual option for those people that are either working at home, or just don't feel comfortable being in a meeting because of the number of people. When we talk about the public using our facilities, we are strongly recommending that visitors wear face coverings, and we're putting appropriate signage up at city facilities. We are, we do have masks available for visitors if they don't bring one of their own. At this point, we're not requiring people who come to city facilities to wear a mask. That decision was made in the context that statewide, that the state does not allow cities and counties to enact face covering regulations that apply community-wide. We can do that within our own buildings, but in that context of what's going on in the state, we just don't feel comfortable, or at least I don't feel comfortable, mandating it for all visitors. I think there is a safety concern there for employees, this is a highly emotional and volatile issue that could, that would put some of our employees in very uncomfortable Now, and most private sector businesses are also in that, in that stage right now of recommending and encouraging mask-wearing, but not requiring it. We continue to evaluate all our indoor programming for safety. To date, we have not canceled any planned programs. One area that has been particularly challenging for us is childcare. Our summer program at Highland Rec was terminated early this year because we were getting so many positive cases amongst the children. So, the infection rates among children are at levels that we have not seen before. So, what's happening with other cities and Pinellas County itself? This past Friday, we had our regular monthly city manager, county administrator meeting, which we're now back to conducting virtually. Short answer is, everyone in the county's pretty much doing the same thing that we're doing here in Largo, so recommending visitors wear a mask, and requiring that their employees wear a mask. I will say that many cities did not resume as many recreation and library programs as we have. We've been sort of at the cutting edge of resuming a lot of programs. Seminole, the city of Seminole, is considering enacting a mask ordinance for the public entering their facilities by ordinance, and Alan can address that a little bit later. There was a rumor circulating that when word got out that they were going to require mask-wearing by the public, that they got a, shall we say, an unfriendly call from the governor's office, but that rumor was not true. As you're all aware, some governments and private businesses around the country have implemented mandatory vaccination policies for their employees. Alan, again, will talk about the legality surrounding that. At this point, no one in Pinellas County is actively considering requiring their employees to be vaccinated. Just like us, there's at least one other city that's having their legal team evaluate that, but as far as I know, no one's, no one certainly has enacted that right now, and I'm not sure anyone has a desire to really do that. One of the reasons behind that was, again, very strong feelings on the part of individuals. There is a concern as the ability to recruit, and maybe even retain, employees if you have a mandatory vaccination policy, and we have a lot of positions here in the city that are particularly challenging to try to recruit people for. We continue to encourage employees to get vaccinated. We continue to encourage employees to get vaccinated, understanding that it's, that's a, it's a personal decision that they have to make. We also understand that vaccinations are not obviously a foolproof answer to the, to the pandemic right now. We do have several vaccinated employees who have tested positive. It seems like, as, as, as you hear around the country, that they, they tend to have mild to moderate symptoms and do not get severely ill. We have had a pop-up clinic run by the Department of Health at, at our library. Three weeks ago, when we had the first one, they, they gave 10 shots. This past Thursday, they had the second one, they gave over 30 shots. So, you know, assuming the first 10 came back for their second shot, we had over 20 new, new individuals, so that was very positive. It's in a nice, convenient location for many of our employees, particularly in public works and parks, and I understand that there were employees there being vaccinated. That pop-up clinic is going to return in three weeks. So, that's, that's a brief overview of, of what's going on both here in the city and in our environment here in Pinellas County. So now, I'll turn it over to Alan. Yes?
What is the protocol for those employees that are exposed to COVID? And do they have to go get a COVID test? And/or are they, are they being asked to stay, work from home if they can? What is the timeframe?
Okay, there's, there's two different answers to that. If they've been vaccinated, they do not have to quarantine, but they have to wear a mask. If they have, if they're not vaccinated, then they need to be quarantined for 10 days, and there's some specific rules depending on whether you have symptoms or not and when, when a fever passes.
Okay, thanks.
That's, that's the CDC guidelines.
Yes, it is. Yes, we are following the CDC guideline, and yet, and I, I didn't mention that, but yes, we are, we are, we are, we are following the CDC guidelines and, and the things that I've talked about here, particularly with regard to our city employees.
Except for requiring masks inside.
Right, that's right. We're not requiring, we're encouraging, yes, or recommending. Thank you.
So let me preface my remarks first by saying there aren't any cases that I can point you to that have decided many of the issues, and many of these things, as Henry mentioned, are with some people very controversial, and they claim that any requirement related to masks, or vaccines, or surveys, or whatever we may talk about violates their individual rights and liberties under the Florida and, and federal constitution. To the extent we have any case law, we have some, we do have a, a rather bad decision that came out of the First District Court of Appeal that relates to the Alachua County ma- mask mandate, that if that became the law, the state of Florida would be difficult for any of these requirements to pass muster. That being said, so the couple of questions that Commissioner Gerard asked me to address, I'll go through. I'll try to be succinct and then leave it open for, you may have some additional questions. The first question that was asked, can the city require all people entering city facilities to wear a mask? My opinion is, I think you can, with some caveats. So a couple caveats, somebody can, that has a medical reason for not wearing a mask, you know, we, we cannot require them to wear masks, we have to accommodate that medical condition. We can request a medical documentation from their doctor that indicates that they cannot medically wear a mask for health reasons, but we can't require them to wear a mask if, if they truly have a medical reason to not wear a mask. The same goes for people who have religious, religious objections, we have to accommodate religious objections. Henry asked me, do we have to accommodate philosophical objections? The answer to that is no. If somebody just doesn't like wearing a mask, or doesn't believe in masks, that would not be a basis for giving them an exception, if you will. But we do have to conduct bargaining with the unions before we can force the employees to, to wear masks. You can't discipline employees who refuse to wear a mask if you implement the rule, that would be considered insubordination. We also would need to consider the issue with regard to public participation in the various boards, especially quasi-additional boards, and the city commission meetings where those boards and the commission are deciding rights of individuals, whether it's a developer, or property owners, or whatnot. You know, if, if the commission wanted to adopt a, a requirement to wear masks at, for example, commission meetings, we could consider setting up this room as a room for those people that don't want to wear a mask, or can't medically, or for religious reasons don't want to, or wear a mask, or don't feel like they can wear a mask, and allow those people who are not masked to view the meeting in here and participate from here like we did when we limited access to the commission chambers.
So basically, we just have to provide reasonable accommodations?
Yes, that's, that's the legal terminology, absolutely. Now, everybody knows that the governor issued an emergency order that prohibits a mandate from using your emergency powers to mandate everybody wear a mask in, in, in the city of Largo. I can tell you, that doesn't apply to the city as it relates to its regulation of its own facilities. The state statute that was adopted, so there was two statutes that I do want to talk about. There's a statute that kind of, that went into effect in July, that, again, that statute that you hear about limits the authority that you have when you declare a state of emergency. It doesn't apply to your authority, what we would call your proprietary capacity as the owner of real estate and buildings and, and whatnot. The other state statute to, that I think is one you should at least be reminded of is the first one that was adopted, that the legislature went into special session when COVID first hit last year, was the bill that they adopted that limits liability for, and it applies to cities and business, and, and businesses who make a good faith effort to comply with government-issued health standards or guidance. So, and that's why I kind of mentioned the, the issue about the CDC does, is now, most recently issued a, a guidance that calls for everybody to wear a mask, vaccinated or not, when you're inside. So to the, if you follow tha- that guidance, that statute protects you from any liability from somebody who may get COVID while in a city facility and claim that somehow, you know, that the city was negligent in not following that guidance and pursue a claim against the city. Second question that I believe Commissioner Gerard asked was, can the city require all city employees to be vaccinated, or submit to tests regularly? Again, I think you can require employees to be vaccinated. There is some litigation going on at this point, that we don't have an answer from the courts. Again, we would have to bargain with the unions before imposing the requirement, but we could impose a requirement that people be vaccinated. We personally have some more concerns about requiring people to be tested, but the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, which oversees the ADA, which is what raises concerns, says that you can take screening steps to determine if employees entering a workplace have COVID, because an individual with the virus will pose a direct threat to the health of others. So while I personally have some concerns whether a court will go along with that and, and allow for testing, because now you're, it's a little bit, it's more than just, you know, like asking people to wear masks. Now you're invading people's, I guess, better term, bodies. But the EOC has issued a written guidance that says you can require testing, and they also indicated you can require tests before returning to work if somebody has tested positive for COVID. That's your, your question, I mean, we can do that. I think the last issue that comes up when we discuss this is, can the city survey the employees to determine if they have been vaccinated, and can we encourage them to get vaccinated? And the answer to that is yes. The survey has to be pretty, you know, has to be somewhat limited, can't be very broad. I do have another client that is doing a, a survey, so we can narrowly draw the questions and, and do a survey. The only guidance we have right now is the FDA has issued an opinion that says that there's nothing in there, and there are regulations or statutes that prohibit asking people if they've been vaccinated. You would have to treat that information as confidential, it would be considered confidential medical information, it wouldn't be subject to public records. The EOC has said we can ask employees as they enter the workplace if they have COVID, if they have COVID-like symptoms, and ask if they've been tested. And you can tell an employee that says they do have COVID, or symptoms of COVID, that they're not allowed to enter the workplace. Couple outside, Henry talked about what people are doing in Pinellas County, just a few things that I'm aware of outside of Pinellas County. The city of Delray Beach is, is requiring employees to be vaccinated unless they have a health or religious reason. If they're not vaccinated, they must submit to testing, that's kind of what you were referring to, Commissioner Gerard. Orange County is requiring vaccinations. Some private employers, Tyson Foods is mandating vaccinations. Walmart is, is requiring its employees that are working in its headquarters in Arkansas to be vaccinated. Disney is requiring its non-union employees to be vaccinated. And then I'm sure you're all aware that President Biden announced that federal employers are gonna have to be vaccinated or wear a mask. The state of New York and the state of California have adopted similar requirements. So with that, that's kind of the legal answers to your questions. Hopefully I've answered your questions.
So, you're saying that it's, it's legal to require, or possibly require people to have a vaccine?
Employees.
Or employees, and that you're gonna ask them if they had that? So are you just going, is it legal to just accept their answer, or are they gonna have to show their vaccination cards also? Because that's, I know, one of the controversies is, that's a, kind of a, a crossing into the HIPAA laws, because that's a, a private card, so-
The EOC has said that's not.
That was, yeah, one day, I mean, that's, that's the whole thing too, is they change every day. So how do, how could we possibly enact something in our city when, when it would have to be changed probably weekly? Because that's how everything that you read and see changes weekly.
And certainly requiring vaccines, as, as Henry said, generates a lot of controversy and probably, and a lot of emotional responses that, you know, may result in, in a lot of negativity amongst the employees, and then a lot of, you know, negative responses that might be very emotional. So not just that it's changing, but it, it probably would create a lot of controversy and, and a lot of upset employees.
I, I always like to know what's legally permissible, but just because it's legal doesn't mean you should do it, or it's desirable to do it.
If I may, I, I asked for this information because we're in a situation now where people are getting sick, hospitals are filling up, our city services are being taxed extensively because of this, and our employees in, in the city facilities need our protection. Not only that, but the general public that enters our facilities, you know, should be able to enter the facility with some sense that, you know, that they're safe there. I'm not telling anybody anything they don't, don't already know, but this Delta variant is highly transmissible. The viral, the viral load is a thousand times heavier than it was in what they call the wild variant, which was the first one, or even the Alpha, and people are getting sick. Younger people are getting sick, people are dying, and some people are be, you know, are being fundamentally crippled for the rest of their life as a result of this. So, with, with that, with that said, if, if we as a city are gonna have facilities that are open to the general public, I think it's, I, I think, and of course, I'd like to hear what other people think and all that, maybe we can reach a consensus, but I think it, it's entirely sensible to ask them to take certain measures to protect not only themselves, but the other people that they're in this facility with. So if they're going to the library, and you want to walk into the library, you're very welcome, but you must wear a mask. That, that's all, you, you, you have to wear a mask. And I understand very clearly that this can become an emotional issue, and that some people may get, you know, may, may react negatively. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but we have to protect our staff and our other patrons, and you're welcome to come in, but you have to wear a mask. And I'll use this, I was thinking about this today. We would not allow somebody to walk into a library if they had a rattlesnake in each hand. You'd say, you can't come in, you have to leave your rattlesnakes outside because they're dangerous. That's the same thing that I'm thinking here. You can't come in if you're gonna, if you're gonna endanger the rest of the staff and, and our patrons. The issue about, you know, the issue about requiring vaccinations, it, it can, it can go either way, you know? And I understand that requiring vaccination is certainly a lot more, a, a, a lot more, and I'll say invasive, than asking somebody to wear a mask. But my goodness, you know, you, you want to come in? You want to go to the Highland Rec, you want to go to the Highland Center where, where parents and little children are? You want to go to the library where, where parents are bringing their kids in, into the children's section, or, or go to Southwest? I, I don't see, I understand people get emotional about it, but you're not required to do any other, anything else that is any more stringent than any safety measure that a, that a government would require. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and, and it's, it's getting worse by the day. I'm making a speech, but I just want to talk about, I just want to point out the seriousness of the issue. The positivity rate in Pinellas County is over six times what it was just a few months ago. The positivity rate in Pinellas County is anywhere from 18 to 20% right now. One out of every five people who's being tested is COVID-positive. You know, where, where before this all started, we were down below 3%, you know? And, and by the way, I, I don't care what anybody, if you just look at the numbers, it's not getting better. So what are we gonna do to protect our employees? And what are we gonna do to, to protect the people who use our facilities? I would like to see us require a mask. One other thing that was pointed out to me is that people, you know, they can get, they can get heated about this. My response is, like at the library, have an officer there. I would rather pay the OT to an officer to stand by if somebody becomes aggressive with our staff, than to let the staff say, well, would you please wear a mask? And no, I'm not going to, and by the way, I'm gonna cough in your face. That's it.
Other questions? I, I mean, so, Commissioner Gerard, I, I agree with, with your, your comments, I really do, and I really honestly believe that it would be much better, obviously, if everybody would wear a mask. My concern goes back, right back to the, to the, the issue of, you know, outside of the shots, but just the mask-wearing is, 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 you know, I, I don't want to have to put some employee of ours who's making a couple dollars an hour in, in the line of fire over an issue that, 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 you know, they, they, they just, they shouldn't have to be involved in. And, and again, I, I don't, I completely agree. I, I would, if it was a, a different situation, if, if it was, if, if, if there wasn't so much confusing information coming, because obviously, you know, they're, the, the first response is going to be, well, the governor said this, you know, and you can't do this here, and- here and.
This study said masks are ineffective.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you know, every, every Facebook researcher in, in the city of Largo is going to come out and say, you know, well, I read this on, on TikTok or wherever I saw it and, and, you know, it's got to be true now, right? So the problem is, is that, you know, and I'm not trying to make light of the situation except for I really want to see like a pitching post for your rattlesnakes. That's kind of, I was just thinking about that, but in all honesty, in, in seriousness. You know, I'm, I'm, my, my biggest concern is, and, and, you know, if, if, if the decision is to put a police officer, you're going to have to put a police officer every single facility we have. It's going to be tough and it's going to cost a lot of money. So if we don't do that, if that's, we don't go down that road, then we're going to have, we're going to have, we're going to be putting, you know, people who unfortunately are going to be put in the line of fire for, for something that while it is extremely important, I don't disagree with you on that. And I, I believe all the numbers, you know, that we're seeing are, are just, are worse than we've, we've seen the, over the entirety of the, of the, of the pandemic. And, you know, but we're, we're, unfortunately, the, the people who are going to have to be responsible for it is not you, not me, not any of us in this room. It's going to be the, you know, the, the people who are sitting here or the, the, you know, the persons who are sitting at the front desk of Southwest Rec or Highland Rec or whatever it is. And my concern is for them specifically, is about what's going to happen to them because they are going to be the ones who are going to have people spitting in their face or coughing on them or yelling at them or physically, you know, causing some type of physical altercation over a mask, right? So, I mean, we can just talk about that at another time, but, but that's what the reality of the fact of the matter is, is that those are the folks who are going to, you know, who are going to have to take the brunt of all of this. And it just, I'm, my concern is specifically for them. That's it. I, I don't disagree that we should, I would love to be able to implement this if it didn't, if I wasn't concerned about what was going to happen to the people who had to actually implement it. So, and, and, yeah.
I do think that the vast.
Requiring employees to wear masks is going to have everybody inside that building that's working there wearing a mask. The vast majority of people are not, are not, maybe not the vast majority. A lot of people are not like crazy about wearing a mask or crazy about not wearing a mask. A lot of people are like, listen, everybody else is wearing a mask in there. I'm probably not going to get within six, I mean, I'm kind of, if I know that I'm going to get in, in six feet of people that I don't know who they are or where they've been, I'm going to put a mask on. And I, I think that's the way the vast majority of the people are. So if you look into the library and everybody's wearing a mask, you got a mask in your pocket because everybody does, with the exception of those people that are going to be mad about stuff, they're going to put a mask on and, and it's going to go a long way. I also think that, you know, there's a lot of our facilities where you can walk in, the library is one, you can go walk in and never get within six feet, six feet of anybody. So you can follow the CDC guidelines, I think. I don't know, the new one might, might say that if, you know, regardless if you're inside, but CDC guidelines used to say if you're within six feet of somebody, you got to wear a mask. I don't know if that's changed from that. But you can go in and check out a book and never get within six feet of somebody and, and not, you know, wear a mask or not, or whatever. So I don't, I mean, I, I don't think that it makes a lot of sense to put our, our people that are employed in all these different facilities in the position of, of being masked employees. And I, go ahead.
Well, I would agree with that and I, I certainly don't think it's the law enforcement role either, you know?
Right.
I had a question about, as it relates to what role we play as an elected body versus what Henry's role as a CEO. If, if the city manager, after discussion, perhaps guidance, but not necessarily action by this commission, says, here's what we're doing as it relates to employees wearing masks, I see that as within his role to do that as opposed to a, a mask ordinance or how it affects the public. In other words, how he elects to have people, you know, stay out if they have an exposure or follows all those other guys. I don't necessarily see that as a legislative action.
And I, and I would add that, that as talented as Henry is, he doesn't do that, make those decisions in a bubble. He has that discussion with the emergency management people, the people that, that are on the front lines, the people that are organizing the whole response to COVID in the city of Largo and, and addresses that decision and, and brings it to us.
I speak, perhaps, and I just disclosed this, that, you know, I had breakthrough COVID after being fully vaccinated. So I have, maybe I can speak from experience here. It's no fun, but, but I, I have some pretty strong feelings about people making individual decisions and what is a violation of the Fourth Amendment as far as, you know, search and seizure and requiring, you know, people to do this or that by government. So, I mean, I think it's all a valid discussion. Everybody wants this thing to be over with, but I'm, I'm not sure, you know, how comfortable I am with mandates.
Yes, and what, what, just to respond a little bit to your comments, yes, I, as, as city manager, I've been making these decisions throughout the pandemic and, and what employees should do and also what restrictions we are putting on the public. There's been a lot more discussion about a lot of these things this time around, this, this wave that we're in right now, that I think has, has maybe come up to maybe a little bit more political sensitivity. And so a lot of communities are having this discussion to make sure that, that everybody's, you know, on board. But, but yes, that, also to follow up with, the mayor said, yeah, you know, we try to follow CDC guidelines to the extent possible. And, yeah, clearly I don't make these decisions by myself and it's, it's through the emergency planning group, emergency management group, and the person in the city that's actually the spearheading our, our COVID response is, is the assistant city manager. But, so, so we, it's, it's a team effort when we make these decisions. But I just wanted to make, to touch base with all of you, the, some of the questions were raised by Commissioner Gerard and I thought it was good to have this discussion to, to see if there was any, any specific direction from the city commission that would change the decisions that I've been making.
Can I just have a comment in unrelated, well, it is kind of related, I guess, to, you know, it doesn't relate specifically to these two items, but, but does relate to, you know, the city manager mentioned it in, in his opening was the fact that, you know, our fire rescue now is having to transport people to, to, to the hospital and the level of, of care that we're going to be able to continue to provide because of that specific issue is concerning to me because, you know, obviously we have a very detailed plan throughout the Pinellas County of, of the level of service that we try to provide for, for our, our residents here in, in Largo as well as the entire Pinellas County. And, and my concern is that we're not, we, at some point in the very near future here, we might have to start, you know, the, the, well, the level of service might not meet those standards that we've been trying to meet for the last several years. So I don't know if that's more of an involved discussion that we need to have. I know the county is trying to address it in, in numerous ways. And I know it's not all COVID related, but.
Yes.
It, you know, there is absolutely an impact because of COVID. So I don't know, unrelated to, to these issues again, and, and I just wanted to make sure we, I brought it up specifically because the city manager did talk about it earlier. You know, I think that we should probably have a little bit more of an in-depth discussion as to what we can do here in the city of Largo as well as what we expect from the county and, and what they can do to help us continue to provide the level of service that we, you know, our residents expect.
Yeah, one, one of the things the county's looking at is, is potentially putting additional fire departments staffed EMS units on the road during peak times. And they would be staffed by firefighters on overtime and that cost would be borne by the county. So that, that's something that's being actively looked at right now. Also, where possible, the departments are putting more transport capable units on the road. So just give you an example, our, our standalone EMS unit is Station 40, which is out at High Point. It's, it's, it's referred to as Medic 40, so it's more of a SUV pickup truck type unit that's not transport capable. Right now, we, we've taken that unit out of service and replaced it with a reserve transport capable unit. So that gives us another, another unit out there in the field to, to assist in these efforts. So there's a lot of that going on in the county as well.
Right. And I mean, you know, I don't want to throw alarm bells up and I don't, you know, foresee us not being able to transport somebody here in the near future, but there is a level of service that we expect, that we expect to be able to provide to our residents, this commission, you know, specifically. So we need to continue to be able to provide that regardless of the situation with Sunstar or whatever those situations are. You know, I expect that the residents in the city of Largo are going to have a level of service and, and I want to be able to continue to provide that for whatever, you know, whatever arises.
Yeah.
We, we, excuse me, John.
No, please.
We, we should keep in mind, of course, that these peak times that we're talking about can run 12 hours.
Absolutely.
Eleven or 10 hours. Start at three in the afternoon and go until two or three in the morning. And if we're putting, you know, firefighters, you know, and by the way, those are paramedics, you know, and all that, if we're putting them on extra, that's, you know, that's a strain on them. You know, how many, you know, how many extra shifts can a firefighter take before, you know, he or she is, is totally burned out? And I know the county is working hard on, on alleviating this. I don't think it's going to happen right away, but, you know, I was doing a ride along myself just, just a week or so ago and we took a little trip up to, up to Morton Plan Hospital. And because of the strain of all these transports and the hospitals are not taking people in right now until they've been rapid tested, you know, while they're, while they're in the box and all that. And so there was a line of Sunstar units and there were a few of ours and they could be sitting there for a couple of hours and they are out of service while they're sitting there, you know? So this is a situation that, you know, I mean, this is aside from what I was hoping, you know, what I was advocating and I was fully ready for people to say, we're not ready to do this. But until people start taking proactive measures to bring this pandemic under control, this isn't going to let up. It's just not, you know? And so we could be having this discussion 30, 60 days from now too.
What are the additional actions the county's trying to take with the hospitals? Is trying to reduce that time that they have to wait to, closer to 15 minutes before they discharge someone from the unit. So the hospitals are trying to establish, increase their bed capacity and, and their capacity to, to, to take patients in a more timely manner. Because, yeah, it's a real problem if, if someone's got to be, you know, in, in the back of an ambulance type unit for two hours before they can actually be admitted to the hospital. That, that's not, that's not acceptable to anybody, obviously.
Is the hospital rapid testing or the EMS?
No, the hospital would be.
So after somebody's stabilized, why couldn't they start the rapid test then so then by the time they get to the hospital that they would have some sort of result rather than line up outside of the hospital?
The explanation that I was given was, you know, because I asked, well, you know, why can't they, why can't they take them faster? By the way, some of the hospitals, I was told, I didn't go to, I didn't go to verify myself, they're putting up triage tents right now. So get them out of the box and put them in a triage tent. But the hospital can't take in more people faster because they don't have the staff to handle it. Their staffs are stretched, you know, you know, so thin, they're ready to snap, you know, they're, they're burned up.
Some of the people that I've spoken with, their staffs are so, so thin here because they're paying 10 times the amount of money for nurses to be, to be working up in New York and other hospitals throughout the country.
Whatever, whatever.
So the, the traveling nurses are, are making six figures now and they've taken a lot of people from the state of Florida.
Right. And, and the staff that we got here and the nurses that we have here around the state and especially in, you know, not especially, but, you know, looking at the Bay Area that we're in right now, they're burnt out. And you can't put them in the hallways and expect that, you expect that staff that's working in an ER, taking care of all the people in the ER beds are also going to be able to consistently take care of people who are in the hallways. They just can't handle the load.
I'm certain you're already doing this, Henry, but like before, when money became available to help alleviate some of these additional costs and we're tracking all this COVID-related overtime for fire department, different units in service, all those things.
Yeah, I don't think we've actually put any additional units in service yet. We, we've changed maybe the mix of units.
I mean, you put paramedics in the, in the centers where vaccines were given and we recruit some of that.
Yes, the county paid the whole cost of those. Yes, and if, if these additional units, the peak units are put in place, they, they, the, the understanding is that would be, that would clearly be paid for by Pinellas County, that additional cost. I think one thing we, you know, the public doesn't fully understand is the EMS system is a countywide service that they contract with the cities and the independent fire districts to provide. So, yeah, they're ultimately responsible for that and I think they will step up to the plate. So if, if I'm hearing correctly, we will just stay the course with what we're doing now with regard to the public visiting city facilities and also our current policies regarding city employees with the understanding, obviously, that this is a very fluid situation and things could change based on, on, you know, what's happening with, with the virus.
It will change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My question was just about, it was kind of brought up about the boards. So will they be socially distanced or speaking, like we were talking about the code board, planning board and such, if they're, how will they be, what will be required of them or how will they be set up?
Yeah, we'll make, we'll make sure they're spaced out very similar to when we got out of the world of virtual meetings and returned in person.
Yeah.
So that'll apply to the city commission too. We'll be into more of the, I guess what I refer to as the COVID formation.
Yes.
To, 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 to spread people out. You know, one of the things that we're, we're not allowed to do is have, you know, virtual meetings. We have to have a majority, we have to have a quorum present physically for a meeting. And, and we'll also, and we, we started doing this a little bit with our, our meeting last week, but we didn't have much time to prepare. We're, we're going to try to, you know, reduce the capacity in, in the commission chamber for the audience. If we expect an item with a very large turnout is to manage them, you know, in other rooms. And we are going to be mindful of how many people would be attending ceremonial items so, so that we reduce the, the number of people that would attend those. You know, one of the biggest ones is obviously when we swear on new police officers or firefighters, how we manage that.
I was just going to say, I believe in choice and, but I also believe that responsibilities come with things. And when you're talking about staff, I, I think, like you said, it is a very fluid thing. I'd like for you and the E O C and to keep an eye on if there are high-rise numbers that we're seeing in staff at buildings, then we take in consideration maybe starting to go to mask again for everybody who comes into a facility. I, like you said, Highland with the kid thing blew up. Right now, when tests are becoming very scarce and people are trying to get it done because their kids have to go back to school, it's very difficult. And at the same time, we don't know what the heck's going to happen with the school thing where if a kid's missing school because they got, and they can't get a test quick enough. So I, that, that's where I'm kind of looking at responsibility. I understand we don't want to put employees at the risk of telling them and I don't like a bully. Hell, I was one of those people that had to sit at the lot, in the lobby telling people you couldn't come in without a mask. So I know what it's like that people try to spit at you, curse at you. But hey, if I'm going to look out for my coworkers and the rest of the public, that's something I'm going to do. Bullies can go to hell. But I, I would like us, for you to keep an eye on where, if it's becoming a hot issue with, with the citizens coming in, then we need to start bringing this up again, maybe do a mask in all buildings for all, for all public.
Yeah, and we'll get feedback from our employees as to how many people they, you know, obviously maybe not exact count, but what, what kind of, what kind of compliance we're getting with the mask recommendations in city facility. I, I have a feeling, as, as was stated earlier by someone, that probably the vast majority of people visiting our buildings are going to do the right thing and wear a mask. But I, I think the, the exceptions are going to be in the minority. Maybe that's wishful thinking, but we'll see how that goes.
And that's what we've learned at the, working in libraries, it's, they come in, they see the staff and they ask, and it's strongly recommended. So that's what we've been saying, strongly recommended. That seems to get the mask on them, but you're still going to have the people that don't want to do it.
Yeah.
But I, protect all our staffs. If it does become an issue, I would rather us go to masking all buildings if that becomes.
Okay. We'll clearly monitor the situation.
Right. And my last word on this, because I did bring it up. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and your input, but this is not a political statement from me. I'm not trying to bring politics into this. This is a matter of the health and safety of our staff and of the people who use these buildings. And I'm just going to say one more time, this. And I'm just going to say one more time, this variant is not like what we saw in the past. You know, one person in one room can infect a lot of people. And the people who are not wearing masks are very likely the people who have also not been vaccinated. And so, we don't want to have an altercation with staff. I understand. But because we don't want to have an altercation with staff, you know, I guess we're going to wind up making a decision for the time being that, you know, we'll go along as, you know, we'll go along because we don't want to have an altercation with staff and we'll take our chances, we'll roll the dice, you know, with, with our employees and the patrons in our buildings. Because that's what it is. And strongly worded, I understand and respectfully submitted, but that's what we're going to do. So, please, keep a close eye on it and, and keep, keep us informed, you know, because just as you said, we already have 41 employees right now who are out either with COVID or quarantined. Forty-one. That's, that's a pretty good number, you know? So, okay. Enough said. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to, uh, City Hall Design Development Update.
I think this discussion will be much more enjoyable. Um, if, if not, I'll be severely disappointed. The... With us this evening is John Curran. He's a principal with ASD Sky and he's the lead architect on the, um, our new City Hall project. And, um, we have John scheduled not just for this evening, but he's also going to be back at our work session next week.
Next week? No, I think it's...
I'm sorry, next month. I'm sorry. Trying to speed up the process.
Thanks, Henry. Appreciate it. Um, great to be here. So, you're gonna, I'm going to give you a, um, try to do a, a brief presentation of where we're at. We're in a phase called Design Development. So, what we, you saw back in schematic design, we're in the process of really working out those details, making sure we choose the right materials and, and really understand how everything is put together. So, I'm going to try to take you through, um, some of the things that we've been developing. You'll see some familiar images and then some, some new ones, just to give you more of an update. This is a continual process. I think that's really important to understand. When we get together back, uh, in, in September, um, you'll see a lot more detail and probably a lot more color. This is, um, really, uh, you know, a, a design that is continuing to develop. So, I'm just going to take you through a few, uh, images that you've seen before, but I think the, the importance and some of the things that we've done with the city, we've spent a lot of time really honing in on exactly what these materials are and have developed some mockups. I'm showing these particular images to give you a sense, if I have a cursor that's running through here, you start to see these windows. We're starting to call these portals. These sort of views into City Hall and also views that, that look out. And this portal language is sort of becoming something we're playing with and having some fun. So, again, you start to see that window portal here, a window portal into the garage, you know, this, this whole plaza can be considered a portal as you look down into this public You know, one of the things you've been seeing and we've talked a little bit about it, this screening element, this material that we're using, it's a light, lightweight fabric mesh that allows us to protect the glass, but it's light and it's about two and a half feet off the glass. And someone had asked us the question, "How are we going to clean that glass?" And one of the things we've developed is this mechanism that allows any, um, person that comes out to, to actually maintain this, uh, an access door out onto this grill. And you could see where that mesh is in relationship to the glass. So, the ability for the city to actually maintain that glass and still provide the protection was something we wanted to share with the city. I mentioned the portals, so like just simple little details of how we enter the building. We're using very similar materials and creating this sort of awning element that we're calling a portal into the entries. The entry here provides light, um, on the street, um, on the entry. It also provides an opportunity for us to sort of create a, um, you know, some kind of signage, some sort of identity as you come in. We're, we're also proposing to do that across the way, um, over here on this sort of very unique retail space. So, that portal entry becomes a language you start to see throughout the outside, throughout all the windows. And we're starting to bring that to the inside of the building as well. And developing that, you know, just getting into those little details on how light starts to, um, find its way into the plaza, into the entry. This is, you may recall, I was talking about the green corridor. This is the canopy inside the plaza that comes from the garage into, uh, City Hall. Using that same sort of portal language and detail, we've created this very interesting linear light that helps really define those pathways as we go through, uh, an entry and sort of movement throughout this entire complex. Just some additional views as we develop. This is a view of that portal into, uh, the retail space, um, on the ground floor of the garage. And then we wanted to share with the city too, the development of the terraces, just to understand that language. And it was very important just to see how those details were coming together. And important to understand that in every floor that we've been developing, um, every department has, and every floor has access to, uh, a major-sized break room and the ability to use this outdoor space on every floor. As we get up to the, the fifth floor, the entire fifth floor across the, the south facade is actually an open terrace that staff is able to utilize. And you start to see the interaction between sort of the awning, louvered elements and the beginnings of the solar panels that we're using not only for shade, but also for developing, um, significant amount of energy. And then one of the things that was a real concern to the city was exactly, how are we going to maintain that glass? So, developing the details of how the glass and this rail system interacts with our screening system and having the ability to easily access the, those windows. So, I'm giving you a little taste of some of those important details as we develop the design of the project. One of the things I wanted to share with you, um, recently, we started to share with the city, the development of the plaza. So, our landscape architect had actually really developed, um, in detail exactly what we're trying to do and accomplish with our water feature. So, when you look at this plan, this is really just a focus on landscape and the element of the water feature that goes through the plaza. So, what we're trying to develop is, is actually a, a system that again, I've talked about harvesting water. The water that's harvested from the roof finds its way here into this water feature and it's pumped through this, this, um, fountain essentially and finds its way to this amphitheater, which is that sort of vertex of the, of the plazas that we've been referring to, the ability to use that surface parking for an event. But you can see this circle has a stage and it becomes really this, this focal point for where the water is moving. So, when you're in the plaza, the idea is that the water will always be moving and moving you towards that amphitheater. There's also a source, uh, where we're sort of, um, at least telling the story that a lot of that water not only comes from the sky, it comes from the ground as well. So, the idea that the water's coming from the spring and finding its way into this amphitheater. So, everything is sort of finding its way ins- inside this plaza to the amphitheater. So, these were some, um, views that were developed to really focus on exactly how we're detailing this water feature. So, leave, leave it to our landscape architects to really not care about what the architecture's doing on the left and the right, but the focus on all these kinds of materials. So, very simple detail and that water gently flowing through this plaza space and finding its way ultimately to the amphitheater. And inside the amphitheater, we're, you know, not only creating a series of seating elements, but really trying to bring some landscape into, uh, into the space. Here on the left, you see the beginnings of the stage. So, the idea is that the city could use this stage for, um, any kind of speaking engagement. Certainly, it's going to be set up for, for concerts, um, having enough electricity to really have a significant type of event. And then whatever seating from, you know, future restaurants, um, you know, around this area. And of course, just people working, um, just coming to this really nice park essentially and seeing the activities all around this City Hall complex. So, inside, the, the way I, you know, described this water feature coming to the amphitheater, what we're trying to do is have the water flow and find its way to the, to the, essentially the base of that amphitheater. So, you'll see these subtle slits and water falling down into this area. Again, trying to emphasize the water's not only coming from the sky, but it's coming from below as well. And then on the north side, I mentioned, you know, this idea that the water's coming from a spring, you start to see palmettos and water actually finding its way through this water feature and then down a waterfall and into, you know, sort of the base of that This is just a, a, a quick image to sort of give you a sense of the light quality that we're trying to develop inside the plaza. So, there will be a subtle light inside the water feature, so you'd always see that. But we're using the water feature and the curb that's right at this edge to light the pathways. What we're trying to do is minimize light pollution in this whole area. So, there's really no uplighting. Everything is always down. So, we're illuminating really the pathways as much as possible and keeping, um, you know, the light, you know, pollution that sort of finds its way to the sky at a, at an absolute minimum. I'm going to take you through a few interior spaces. You know, one of the things we tried to develop and share with the city was the beginning of, of developing our lobby space. In our opinion, the lobby and what happens in that public space and then what ultimately happens in the green corridor that we're developing, which is, you, you may recall is the center space, the center spine of City Hall, really become the definers to, to us in terms of developing all of the interior colors and the materials. So, when you look at this plan, whoops, back there a second. This plan just gives you a sense of the entry sequence. This is the zone where the green corridor enters. So, most of the people are coming from this entry, from the garage. These are the main entries off the street and we're creating this simple path. So, this is always open directly to the security, which is under the grand stair. You always have to go through a checkpoint, meet at the security, you would get a pass to either go past this area to get into the elevator lobby, or if you're going to the chamber, you would go, uh, past these, um, turnstiles here to ultimately get into any one of these, um, five rooms, uh, which is essentially the chamber. So, again, we'll get to the chamber discussion shortly, but it is a multipurpose room that in, uh, contains the chamber, but is also divisible into, uh, additional four other rooms, which I'll share with you shortly here. You see in the lobby, what we're starting to develop is the ability for people to actually meet in the lobby, whether it's through a booth, whether it's through a series of tables and sort of interactive iPads in this area, or if some staff member wants to meet with someone, um, you know, in the public, instead of taking them upstairs, they could actually have a private meeting in sort of a, a movable, uh, conference room. So, these are just a few views from inside. I talked about the portal, this idea of the entry. Um, you can start to see the way that awning and that, that metal element sort of defines that entry sequence, trying to keep this path always clear. And you see the way the entries, entry to the garage and then these two entries off the street. This is a view underneath the grand stair and the idea of the security zone. This is the pathway out to the garage, but we've created a sort of private lounge before you could actually go into those turnstiles to go into the chamber. So, just a few views as we go through the lobby. We've developed sort of a language, um, that this has been developed with what we'll call Team Largo, just to try to understand the various materials. In most of these public spaces, we're utilizing terrazzo material on the floor, so it's a hard surface, but very similar to the concrete pavement that we're doing outside in the plaza. We're exposing a lot of the structure. So, you start to see imagery of these exposed, um, steel columns and finding ways up in the ceiling to actually be exposed again. So, sort of a, a, a very modern, simple, um, industrial sort of aesthetic. And then utilizing a, an acoustic wood ceiling to actually just bring some warmth into the space. I mentioned just, you know, one other thing. So, I talked about this sort of interactive table, the idea of a series of, whether they're iPads or some sort of kiosks that allows citizens to, to actually interact with the city. Um, if they're creating an appointment, they'll actually be able to do things like that in this area, or they could just have a meeting in this zone. Right now, we're looking at these movable conference rooms. Instead of having walls, they'll actually be all glass. So, you could see right through them and, and really just the idea of openness in this lobby. Very important. I talked about the green corridor. Um, the idea of the green corridor is that it's, really becomes the social space for City Hall. It's the area where, um, we've developed, um, a majority of the conference rooms. So, staff will actually meet in this green corridor, if you will. If you're on the fifth floor and you might have a conference room meeting on level three, you would likely just simply take the communicating stair down. This is a sort of a, an inspiration image that we're showing, this idea of portals, utilizing these, these elements of seating areas, zones where you can just sort of pause, um, but creating these portals inside the green corridor. So, we've been spending a lot of time, it's not finished just yet, but, um, this is a section cut through the building. We've, we've, you've seen images of our living wall. We're starting to break that down a little bit and work with sort of a pattern language. And when you see in this section, you see the living walls finding its way as high as it can go into, uh, or into the building and up to the fifth floor. And you see that communicating space in the center, you see another wall here. You look at this, you start to see these portals. And what we're trying to create inside that corridor are these little zones of sort of, um, quiet areas for social, socializing. The idea that you could sit and potentially work in this area here while you wait to go into a conference room, uh, throughout the day. We anticipate that this green corridor, this social space is really going to become that sort of, um, main street, if you will, inside the building. So, just some, we'll call preliminary views of what's happening, um, inside that green corridor. So, this is a view up on level four where you start to see the hints of the living wall and how these portals, these social spaces, these seat, seating areas start to interact with that corridor. So, if you're waiting for a, a conference here, you have the ability to just sort of sit here and maybe hang out and do some work. Uh, we anticipate these are going to become very popular. Just a, a view of what we're trying to do in terms of treating the wall here, um, these are the, um, uh, communicating spaces to every floor. Um, we're at, now in the process of developing the ceiling here with the same wood that you saw in the lobby. So, again, this idea of trying to maximize the ceiling heights and everywhere we can so we can maximize the light that comes, uh, down, uh, from above. And really, um, just create, uh, very simple materials and the use of wood very strategically for, for warming up the space. The chamber is a, um, still a work in progress. Um, as we're developing this, I mentioned, what you're seeing here in plan, these lines represent what we call a skyfold. So, the room has the ability to completely open up all five of these rooms into one large space. And we're using a, a motorized system that's called skyfold where you could close these and have, of course, five individual spaces. You can sort of arrange these in any way you want. So, don't get caught up in the way the furniture is set up, as you see here. We can arrange it in many, many different ways. The focus of the chamber though, is really these two rooms here. The dais stays, um, sort of a permanent situation. It's very similar to what you have right now. Um, the assistant city manager and the clerk would sit here, um, in what we're calling the, the bullpen over here. And we're starting to look at creating a permanent podium and a permanent, uh, desk condition here as well. This always stays as is, so obviously, um, you, you might have a session or a public meeting where you use all four of these rooms and then this skyfold closes down. Um, we're in the process of really developing exactly how everything is working inside that space, looking at actually dropdown TVs that give the public, uh, the ability to, um, you know, obviously, uh, understand and see the, the events inside the chamber. But when you're not using it for a chamber event at the dais, those TVs can come up. What you're seeing, by the way, are, are renderings we call white boxes, because we're still in the process of developing the colors and the materials. We just wanted to give you a sense of, you know, how this space is coming together. So, this is a view, um, that you start to see if, if the entire room was open. So, again, just, it just gives you an idea of, of how the spatial quality is, is really starting to work out. And then we've been developing the typical office space. Um, so, I'm not going to get into the details of...
I was just going to go back to the chamber real quick. And I, I noticed that you had put the podium close to where you have the clerk and, and, you know, I know it's very preliminary, but that is a, a huge problem with our current situation, is the podium is across from the clerk, across the staff. that is a, a huge problem with our current situation, is the podium is across from the clerk, across the staff table, so if they wanna, if a speaker wants to share an item with the commission, it's just awkward in there, so I could, I appreciate you giving some thought to that, I think we talked about it when we met individually. The only other thing in there is, in, in a regular meeting, we usually have a police officer present, so there's probably some designated spot you would have for that.
Yeah, and, 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 and keep in mind too, that, you know, again, this is preliminary. We anticipate that we'll be spending even more time with you as we develop a more significant design where images are a little bit more developed, but this just gives you a sense of what we're trying to work out preliminarily. But I appreciate that. And then a typical floor, I, I, I started to mention, I was, I wasn't gonna bore you with our, our ceiling plans, but we're developing strategies in terms of lighting, using that sort of linear approach, so these were sort of inspiration images. Um, very simple, sort of, um, clean space, as you see here, and then, um, areas where we can start to express and have some fun with, um, you know, with, with lights and just simple sort of exposure of the ceiling, um, and, and sort of, again, uh, emphasize that sort of very, um, industrial sort of modern aesthetic, just very simple, um, uh, what we like to consider somewhat timeless, splashes of color throughout the spaces, but not very sort of overly dramatic in terms of those colors.
That picture on the right, the image on the right, that drop ceiling that we're looking at?
Yeah, so it's a combination, we're gonna have a combination of drop ceiling and, and areas where you see here, where it sort of pops open and exposes the structure. Um, so when you look at the plan, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to emphasize those zones around this area of entry, and then the areas where people work, we're, we're dropping those ceilings so that, you know, the, the ceiling itself becomes an acoustic element for us.
I don't love drop ceilings, but I do know that they're great at minimizing bounce, keeping the acoustics.
And this is just sort of, again, white box images of just sort of how the, the spaces are developing. We've actually, um, started to look at exactly what those workstations are going to be and started to, to develop, um, mockups so the city can actually kick the tires, if you will, to understand what, what exactly and, and how those spaces work. So these white boxes are now in the process, after we spent some time with the city, um, we're really starting to develop exactly what that carpet's going to be. The, the thought of all the colors are being put together, and by the time we get together in September, you'll start to see the melding of those colors starting to come together. So that is it. I tried to do this as quickly as possible. I, I know it's not as exciting as COVID discussions.
It's not as scary.
But it is contagious, sure.
Actually, I just had a question regarding that. But sorry, you know, not to be Debbie Downer by any means, but are those the, um, floor plans you are showing us for workstations? Should we ever face COVID or whatever in the future? Are, do they have the ability to space out? You know, be the, if it were six feet apart, or, you know, the individuality that we would have to have in an event like that?
Yeah, I, I think, um, so the smallest workstation typically is about seven and a half by seven and a half, so you're always six feet apart from, you know, your colleague, in terms of the, the working environment. Uh, these workstations, uh, are mobile, so you can take them apart and, and reconfigure and move. Um, so one of the things that we've been trying to do in all of these plans is be as flexible as possible, right, so we're, we're, we're establishing, we're trying to, um, satisfy the program needs, but give the city as much flexibility as possible, so ten years from now, we anticipate not only will you grow, but you'll also change and adapt. So it's really about, um, a combination of open office space with minimal closed office space. Still giving everybody the opportunity for private zones when they went to go on a phone call, but again, that open space gives the city maximum flexibility.
And we'll also have a very high-quality air conditioning system, so you're bringing in a lot more fresh air and you're filtering it better than the existing systems.
What I like about the chambers, I like that it's divided, um, so we can use it for multipurpose, so if it's, the city's not using it, we could have a group come in, and if they want to use City Hall for something, that would be a great opportunity to, let's say, Boy Scouts wanted to do something, or if it's Girl Scouts. Um, and I also like that we could use that where we could section off, because like this room, we do work sessions here, so we could section off the dais part and just have a meeting in the regular part. I like the exits to the backside of it, um, because it kind of gives you the opportunity to, to leave the commission to, to go back out. Uh, I don't know what the, the windows will look like, or is that just a wall that would be coming into the chamber for light?
So, so right now, we're, we're setting up, uh, floor-to-ceiling glass from this point where the cursor is, all the way around, and then we're also looking at really this wall actually having the ability to open up. So, um, you're exactly right, and, and, and how the configurations end up are, you know, there's, uh, there's dozens and dozens of configurations. We're, we're also providing, um, a small mezzanine in sort of the back of house that, that not only would be used um, for various functions for the city, but it'd also be used for storage, so the, the ability for the city to, um, bring various furniture configurations, tables and chairs, and put them away when you're not using them. So if you wanted to, if you wanted to set this room up as, as a sort of movie theater, you could do that, you know, you could literally have this type of audience theater-style seating all the way through, and these doors really just become emergency exits, for the most part, so that, you know, when we examine this, we examine it for the maximum amount of people. And in order to do that, we, in each room, they had to have actually two means of access. And, and it just becomes convenient in many ways.
So that movie theater idea kind of, uh, leads into what I was gonna ask, so you have floor-to-ceiling windows, is there gonna be some kind of a screening or dampening system so you could darken the room as well?
Yes, yeah, there'll, there'll be, um, uh, blackout shades, as well as just sort of Mecca shades, so you'll have the ability to sort of shade the space, as well as completely black it out. The, this, this zone right here, these two rooms with the dais, and then this first room, this is likely, you know, the majority of your commission meetings, you know, so, and, and there actually are no windows in here, you, you, you know, if this stays open and maybe this, this, um, wall is down, and you have sort of an expanded chamber condition, you'll have windows at the end, which, which is nice. So the idea of bringing light, but yet controlling the light is something we've been trying to do.
Okay, and, and the green wall, is the captured water system gonna be used to, to irrigate that green wall, or is it gonna be?
Yeah, so, so the water harvesting system that we, um, are developing all comes from the roof of City Hall, and it's being utilized to irrigate the entire complex, use it for irrigation of the living wall, it's being used for, um, water to, to actually infuse the water feature that you see out there, as well as gray water for all the toilets, all the water closets.
We should get a density bonus for that, buddy. Okay.
And we didn't have to apply for a density bonus, so in, in the DRC.
Maybe we can sell that.
It met all the requirements.
Or we swap it. Okay.
Any other questions? Oh, brought your robot. Unrelated to this.
I do like the little sit-out area, yeah, that, you were saying that we could do like a speaker or something? Now, where the water's all coming through and everything like that?
Um, let's see, you mean in the, in the green corridor here?
Yeah, the green corridor, or, yeah, no.
A little, a little stage here.
Little stage where it's like an amphitheater.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I think that's kind of cool, 'cause you could have like a nice speaker come and, you know, if the city, uh, we're doing a staff presentation or a public thing, I think that'd be a cool little, nice thing to sit outside, or if you're having lunch at that, one of those restaurants.
Yeah.
I think that's a cool idea with the water coming in.
A wonderful feature.
Maybe some improv.
Yeah, improv, that's it.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great place for just the Friday night little concert series or something like that.
And, I mean, this, 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 again, these images were focused on exactly how we're doing and treating the hardscape and landscape, but right at this corner is, is the City Hall building, so right here is where you look into the chamber. So the idea of, you know, the wall opening up, you could have an event or an activity inside the chamber and have it completely open to this. So we wanted the stage to be, um, sort of facing that, the vertex of City Hall. So you can actually face the, the area of the parking area, and then of course, the area of the, the plaza itself, as well as an activity going on in the chamber.
The, on the street side of, one of the very early, uh, one of the very first, uh, images that you had, on the street side, I, that sidewalk looked really, really deep, is that by design? I mean, it, it looked like it could be almost a twenty-foot, you know, wide sidewalk.
It, it is by design, it's, it's actually following the West Bay Drive, um.
Ability initiative, or, but that's on the other side of the, but I.
And, and, let me just make sure I'm, um, referring to, were you, like, referring to this image?
No, there was more of a close-up. Yeah, and I think maybe even the next one. Well, something like that, yeah. It looked very, I mean, how? Do you have any idea how deep that is?
Yeah, um, so, I mean, right here, you know, it, it does open up to the, to the, uh, lobby, um, it actually, that glass comes in five feet, but the way we've set it up, um, let me see if I have some other images as we go through.
There.
Yeah, so here.
There, 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 yeah.
Right, so what we're trying to do is create a ten-foot awning for each, um, commercial space. So from that line of the awning to, um, basically, this line of the awning is where we are twenty feet from the curb. So technically, it is thirty feet back, and we did that strategically so that, um, commercial, uh, tenants would have the ability to utilize that outdoor space.
Outdoor seating, or?
Outdoor seating, yeah, you know, we think certainly food and beverage, uh, activities are gonna be very popular here, we think. Um, but again, um, where that cursor line is, from here to the curb of West Bay is twenty feet.
Okay, great, that's great. Makes it so open, you know, and, and.
Yeah, they're looking like a little plaza there.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you for the exciting update.
Your patience.
Yeah, yes.
Well, I hope you found it educational, too.
If you don't have an umbrella, I encourage you to stay for some budget discussion.
I tried to make it brutal, exactly, and, and this would be a rooftop element.
I saw, I pulled it on my phone, I know. Yeah, you see it?
Wait till he's too brutal.
What is it, Donna? The storm?
Yeah, the storm is, are there more, more? Hold on. Whoa, icy time now, guys, let's go.
It got dark fast.
So you're gonna do, you're gonna, you're gonna show it to your after?
Yeah, 'cause they do give free ice creams to dogs.
I already had to get a.
Somebody put a call into Jeremias, you know?
The first time was kind of crowded. Literally had to get a puppy. They're awesome, guys. Lights up.
You think Jeremias was DoorDash?
Oh, yeah, guy.
Yeah, for those DoorDash, you think Jeremias was DoorDash?
Yeah, no doubt.
I think he said thirty-eight locations in Orlando alone. I was like, oh, I mean, I guess, 'cause Orlando's so.
All right, next up, we're gonna discuss, uh, some budget direction.
Placed.
Yes, good evening, uh, Mayor and Commissioner, last but not least, we've got our second budget work session item, so, uh, I'm here today, we're gonna go over a couple things. Um, so first, we're gonna talk about some of our budget engagement efforts since the last work session. As you all remember, we had a joint work session with the Finance Advisory Board, uh, in early July, and since that time, we've uh, begun and done some of our public outreach and budget engagement on the proposed budget, so I've got with me Julian Perez, as well as, uh, Brooke Bailey, Sean Lopez, and Eileen Carey, uh, virtually, uh, Mary Simonis is also joining us virtually, uh, and they'll give an overview of our budget engagement and outreach efforts. Uh, and then our chairperson from the Finance Advisory Board, Carrie Shelby, is here with us today, and she'll uh, share with you the, uh, takeaways from the Finance Advisory Board's meeting and the direction that you provided at the last work session, and then finally, we'll just recap uh, some of the changes on the budget reconciliation list that was attached to the memo, uh, and take any further direction that you all might have. So with that, I will hand it over to Julian and, uh, Sean and Eileen and Brooke.
Hi, everyone, good evening. Um, so we are going to talk about our community outreach and engagement for, uh, the budget this year, so we're excited to share with you how we engaged the community this budget season, uh, did a few things differently, kept some of a, a few things the same. So as an overview, we had five in-person budget engagement sessions. Um, so this was a, sort of a new, uh, method that we used this year. We did pop-up sessions at different locations across the city, um, and we were able to connect with over a hundred people at five locations. So we went to Walmart, Highland, Southwest, the library, and an outdoor concert at Largo Central Park. Um, we did try to find some other locations that ended up falling through, um, but we'll look to build out those locations for future years. Uh, but we feel good about engaging with over five hundred people, and, uh, the only one that got rained out was the end of the, uh, concert series. So, good thing we weren't out there tonight. Uh, we also had a virtual budget engagement session, uh, we shared the information for all of these sessions on our webpage through fourteen Facebook posts, um, on a hand flyer, as well as our e-news and one press release. And then we, in addition to hearing from those individuals at the pop-up sessions and the virtual engagement, uh, we also had submissions to Balancing Act, which is something we've done for the past several years. Uh, we had seven total submissions, um, they were from different zip codes in the area, and then we did have two hundred and fifty webpage visits to a special webpage that we created, largo.com/budget, where we had a video, uh, with Mayor Brown asking the community to participate in the variety of the engagement sessions that we had this year. Um, and just to show, so these pictures really give you an idea of what the pop-up session looked like, so again, this was a new method we used. On the poster, um, of the left side of the image, you see some example projects that we shared that had been funded. The colors correspond with our three strategic focus areas of sustainability, public health, and safety, and community pride. And we'll share more about the projects, um, that we gave people just as really a reference point. Um, and then we had bags at the table, um, with each of our individual initiatives from the focus areas, where folks were able to actually use, uh, wooden coins and kind of put their coin, um, as their money where they thought, uh, we should be spending our funds. So if they liked the projects in one area, they could put more coins in that bag, um, and we were able, um, to get, uh, over a hundred people participate in that activity, so that was great. So our next, um, slide, I'm gonna pass it to Brooke Bailey, 'cause we had, um, community engagement staff and our Office of Performance and Budget team at these events to answer questions.
And one thing I wanted to mention about the coin activity was, it was very exciting, uh, having our eight strategic initiatives there. We gave out five coins, and a lot of the responses that we got was, this is really difficult, but I wanna put it in, in every single one of them, and, uh, we were able to explain that this is the decisions that have to be made every year during this. Yeah, right, thank you. So this was a great opportunity for them to, uh, have some insight on that process. Um, so with that, uh, these are a list of the focus areas from the strategic plan, but then underneath, with the strategic initiatives, we were able to show example projects from them, um, and we shared those, uh, to help give that reference point, as Julian had mentioned. Um, for example, uh, with that, um, the library Bookmobile was featured under, uh, an initiative for cultivating and supporting a vibrant intergenerational community, um, as well as community mental health resources were featured for, uh, building a community of safe and healthy neighborhoods.
Okay, so I, I wanted, uh, to talk a little bit before I hand it back over to Julian to dive into some of the, uh, the, the data that we, uh, uh, collected from our, our budget engagement, is just talking about kind of the, the, the success of incorporating this concept of, of meeting people where they are and making, making something that, although I find it very exciting, the, the budget, making it, making it, um, uh, uh, accessible to people through this, through this, uh, through this exercise. Um, so, so I think we had a, a really great experience once people realized that we weren't there to sell them something or talk to them about their car's extended warranty, that they were.
or talk to them about their car's extended warranty, that they were very excited to, to talk about this, this topic. And it was really a positive experience on our end to be able to interact directly with, with residents and educate them on strategic decision-making. And to be able to take this idea of, of explaining how our decisions are based on a strategic plan and that we have, you know, our vision, what we aspire to be as a community choice in Tampa Bay. And the way we're gonna get there is through our mission of providing superior services that inspire community pride. And these focus areas and these initiatives are where all these things we do fall into these buckets. And, and it was really great to see, you know, to, to, to work with people to, to, to help them understand what each of these initiatives meant. So we're, we're really excited about that, and we're excited to expand this next year to be able to use this, this concept and get more engagement next year with the FY 2023 budget. And also to be able to incorporate this with the CIP process also. So with that, I will hand it over to Julian to dive into some of the data.
Yeah, so this really was a team effort between our two divisions in administration. And so we were able to use a new tool, for us at least, Power BI, and really dive into how that can be helpful to show a dashboard and really show our data in a way that is user-friendly and even able to put in our branding of our strategic focus area colors into the image. So I want to share a little bit about what we learned from the 109 people-plus that we connected with. We know we had 109 that engaged in the coin activity. But there were others that just came up, talked to us, you know, didn't want to directly engage, but did have a few questions. So it was great to connect with people in different ways. This shows you on the map where we had these different pop-up sessions. And so, you know, we did use our city facilities, knowing that we could meet people at these locations that, you know, use our recreation, that are at the outdoor concert at Largo Central Park. And then we also wanted to branch out and go to some private businesses as well, where we could get a really random sample of our community. This was a little bit harder to get in, you know, took more relationship building to be able to get those permissions. So that's something we'll definitely work on in the future, is to keep building those relationships. Because that was really a great experience to be, we were able to be at one Walmart, we had a table outside. So people, as they came out, or before they were going in with their groceries, we just talked to a broad array of people, you know, all ages, families, people by themselves. And we're able to connect with them that maybe we hadn't had an opportunity to connect with those folks before. So it was great. And this shows you that, you can see on the first pie chart up here, we can see when we kind of click on each of these wheels, how many people we talked to at each location. So that was at the library, and then we can see who we talked to at Highland and provided individual comments, and so on and so forth around the wheel. So this is actually something that is on largo.com/financialcenter. So you're able to go in yourself and take a look around and see who we talked to and what they said. And we have on the next pie chart really where people voted using those wooden coins by focus area. So we did have most people putting most of their coins into our public health and safety. And then sustainability followed with our community pride initiatives after that. And you can see also, when you click on those, where the exact initiatives fell in terms of that coin activity. And so here, we can dig a little deeper to see that building a community of safe and healthy neighborhoods was the top priority across all of our locations of where we're putting our funding, followed by the natural environment and ensuring sustainability for future generations, and then investing in quality public infrastructure. So those are the top three, but really, folks, you know, had a hard time, as Brooke mentioned, making those priorities. And we're happy to see some of the projects they hadn't known were going on, on that poster that featured those. So again, this is available largo.com/financialcenter. You can see community engagement sessions. And we are here to answer any questions about the community engagement part of the budget. And I think I did forget, actually, sorry, one sec, that we have a second page here. So in addition to just the bag activity, we did have folks write individual comments. So we had a poster paper with sticky notes that people could either tell us what they wanted us to write up there for them or they did it themselves. Folks really liked the, I think the bag activity was really approachable. And then we had people that, you know, weren't sure about putting their comment up there on the poster paper. Some people put multiple comments up there. Overall, we had 54, I believe, individual comments. But those could have been several comments from one of the same people. But they, I think, you know, one individual might have put three comments at the most in terms of, you know, our experience anecdotally being at the sessions. But you can see that, you know, we, we tried to code these thoughtfully between a few of us looking at the comments and coding them separately and then merging that together. So road and sidewalk updates was definitely by far what people commented on the most. A lot of folks, you know, talking about individual roads. We had some repeats of a same road by multiple community members. And then natural resources and environment, folks talking about a variety of issues here in terms of green spaces, fresh markets. And then other comments that didn't really fit into one code, but were things that people wanted to see. And you're able to go through these on that website as well. Recreation for kids, basic needs and services, promoting our local history, community safety, and then promoting Largo through local media and just in general promoting the great things that Largo's doing. So that is what we heard from our community, and now we are happy to answer any questions.
The people, the 109 people?
Yes.
Did you verify how many of them are Largo residents, or were they all Largo residents?
Yeah, we did that verbally, just because this was a pop-up session. We didn't have too many, you know, like a demographic survey or anything like that. But we did ask, are you a resident of Largo? And those are the folks that stopped. So we asked that to every person that came up to the table. And we mentioned that we're the, you know, city of Largo, and we're talking about the annual budget, which includes our resident tax, tax dollars. So we had people say, no, I'm Clearwater, you know, see ya, and, and walk away.
Half of those were probably in Largo.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, right. Well, half of them said they were in Largo, probably outside the city too, so.
Yeah.
But that's great, that's great.
That was a Walmart on Roosevelt, right?
That was the Walmart on Missouri, actually. Yep.
He said only the Girl Scouts and the city of Largo are able to go.
That's a beautiful thing.
Yeah, but we look for, you know, more groceries and, you know, maybe laundromats, common places that people might be in the future. This was a really successful method, I think, and it was fun for our teams to get out there and have those one-on-one conversations in a kind of a smaller setting.
Jeremiah's Italian Ice next time, too.
Yes. We need some coupons.
Could we work with the chamber, maybe, to find numbers that instead of just going to the chamber, we could say, hey, you're a business in Largo, could we promote there? I think that connection might help.
Yeah, great idea.
Businesses with a lot of foot traffic, certainly.
Banks or something like that.
So you used Microsoft BI to put together this? You like using it? Because it's new with the city, right?
Oh, yes. It's, it's, um, it's something where when I started here two years ago, I had no idea what it was. And then we kind of dove into it headfirst and just watching videos, things like that, and being able to see the, these kind of power that it has. Really excited about it, and we're starting to incorporate it more and more into our performance measurement. But I think that's, that's a whole other topic. I can, I can go on for an hour or two about, about that.
It really does help you visualize, you know, what's your, the data you've got.
I, I think just along like places, depending on, you could get different demographics. For example, at the diagnostic clinic on a, on a Tuesday morning, you're gonna have significantly older people than, than maybe at the Walmart in Missouri. But both of those will probably be primarily people that live in Largo. So, so I, kind of thinking, I'm sure you probably talked to Publix and got shot down.
Um, so we, we really tried to think of a broad range of places that we could go. And we did not end up reaching out to Publix. We reached out to Walmart instead. And, you know, went there a few times to kind of check out the space first, and it was busy.
Right, right, yeah.
So it seemed like there were a ton of people going through there at all times of day and felt like it was a place we could get connected.
You could go at like 11:30 at night and get a different group, too.
You see different answers.
11:30 on a Friday night.
But we'll think about that, too, you know, each year that we do this and get better at who we're reaching. Because we do want to make sure we're reaching a, you know, diverse group of residents, whether it's age or, you know, making sure they, you know, either live in Largo or that we're communicating that as well. And so we'll keep building those relationships and definitely open to ideas, and I've noted those down already.
It's, it's a really nice, visible way to, to reach out. I mean, most of our, I've, I've been at a lot of public input sessions for budget workshops in the last 10 years. And, and I've seen many of the same people. And, and so I would guess, I think I saw one or two answers that I know who they were from. But other than that, it was probably new people that generally have never put any input into our budget process in the past. So that's, that's a great thing.
And just to expand on those comments, I mean, you know, over the, over the last eight, nine years that I've been here, you know, we have been continually wanting to get more information from our residents as to how we should, what should prioritize in the budget. And for whatever reason, I mean, you know, coming to a commission meeting can be a hard to do. So for you all to be able to go out to the street and get that information firsthand, make it interactive, make it fun, I cannot begin to tell you how much I appreciate this information, especially, you know, seeing the data live and, and being able to manipulate it in a little bit, you know, so fantastic job. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate this.
I'm looking forward to getting onto largo.com/financial.
You've got a computer right there.
Yeah, I know.
So, but, um. It, no, great job. This is awesome. I mean, it just, it's, it's great that we're able to get out there and, and really just get the information from people who this is, or these decisions are going to impact on a daily basis. So, awesome, y'all. Thank you very much.
It's also important to note that this is a blend of two different, it used to traditionally be two different departments.
Yes, for sure.
So this is a cooperative effort, you know, I mean, the budget used to be kind of done in a back room somewhere at City Hall. And this is a whole different thing. Right, Henry?
With the door closed.
Yeah. So, no, it's really, it's really great. It's a good blend. I appreciate it.
Excited about it.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Great job.
Did we get through that? That was quick.
There's a lot more stuff.
I just want to reiterate my thanks for Eileen and Julian and all of the work that they put in to help us do that. We wouldn't have been able to do this alone. So it was really wonderful to have communications and engagement with us. And Sean and Brooke and Matt Defiori, who's not here tonight, putting in extra time at unusual times and locations and outside to, to make this happen. So it was a team effort, and thanks to everyone for doing that. We now have our Finance Advisory Board Chair, Carrie Shelby, here to report back from the Finance Advisory Board.
Thank you, Will. This is not going to be as dramatic as what's going on outside. It's pretty cut and dry. So I'm here to present the Finance Advisory Board's recommendations regarding fiscal year 2022, proposed budget, and proposed property tax rate. To start off, we endorse the online budget document as an effective, clear communication tool. And the board members found it easy to navigate and user-friendly. The use of scoring and objectives for the proposed budget items helped to guide the board as to how the budget reflects the strategic plans for the city. In regards to Largo's downtown project, the board supports the proposed expenditures as it relates to the plans for our new City Hall complex, changes to personnel, and the downtown landscaping. Regarding the plans to spend the federal revenue awarded to the city from the American Recovery Plan Act, the board approves how these funds are to be allocated. There was a thoughtful approach to how these funds are to be distributed, and a diversity of community needs are being addressed. The board approved the proposed changes to the capital improvements program. The board approved the proposed utility rate increases. The board approved the recommended debt issuance for up to $60 million for the new mixed-use City Hall complex and the Parks Administration reconstruction. We approved and proposed additional personnel and the proposed reoccurring operating expenses. The board supports the proposed property tax rate of 5.62. There was lengthy discussion on this topic, especially as it related to rebuilding the general fund balance so that we can reach the target of an unrestricted fund balance of 20% of budgeted expenditures. The board wants to leverage the growth in property value to aid in moving towards this 20% goal. We also discussed and compared the rates of neighboring cities, and there was a strong response that as Largo taxpayers, we get valuable services for our tax dollars and are confident in the financial stewardship of the city. The board encouraged the continued monitoring and limiting recurring costs when possible. And we appreciate all that staff does to provide financial information that is accessible, transparent, thorough, and for folks, informed discussion. So on behalf of the Finance Advisory Board, I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for Michelle?
Thank you. I certainly appreciate the input and read through all the discussion and comments that was provided with our packet, basically the minutes from the meeting. And it's clear that you guys accept your role handily and do a great job and pay a lot of, you know, put a lot of time into the, to the process, and we certainly appreciate that.
I want to add also that I really appreciate the way that you put together your minutes. They were, they were thorough, they were clear, and really gave a sense of the discussion that was going on there. I really did appreciate that.
That was staff.
Is that you, Will?
Mary.
Okay, Mary. Mary, thank you, Mary.
Yes, thank you, because that helped me just to summarize from that.
Yeah, well done, very well done.
Carrie, any feedback on the joint session that we do, the work session? Do you guys still like?
Yes, we did talk about that, and we felt that that is a very effective use of time for everyone involved. Because my understanding in the past, prior to me being on the Finance Advisory Board, there were multiple meetings that would occur. And staff would present to City Commission and then present to the Finance Advisory Board. Now having us all meet at one time is a much better use of everyone's time. We also felt as a board, we needed to ask more questions because Commission did have a lot of questions at that joint session. And our members were just, I think, taking it all in for the first time. And it's not that we didn't have questions. I think those questions arose later.
There's just no controlling Commissioner Smith at those meetings.
Yeah, well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can't shut up any other time.
They were good questions.
They were good.
All right, and, and thank you to all of our Finance Advisory Board members who aren't here tonight, but we had a wonderful meeting and appreciate the chair recounting those recommendations from the board. So the last thing we'll cover tonight that's new information are the budget reconciliation changes. These are changes from the proposed budget that have come up, either rebudgeting projects from the current year into the next year because we don't think they'll be able to be executed in time. New information that has come up since the development of the proposed budget that we feel needs to be included in the budget, as well as any additional changes that have arisen from just change in scope or circumstances. So all of those changes have been attached to your memo, and I'm gonna outline just a few of the more major changes in here. So among the rebudgeted items, there are two capital, three capital projects, actually. The Bayhead Reconstruction, the Lift Station Flood Plane Mitigation Project, and the Data Network Switch Replacement. Those will likely not be encumbered this fiscal year, so we've rebudgeted them to execute early next year, as, as well as the city welcome signs and the permit fee study project that you have there. Some additions and changes to the proposed budget include an additional construction manager position that is going to help support a number of these construction projects and facilities projects over the long term to make sure they're executed successfully. The West Bay Drive Stormwater Repair that we discussed at the last commission meeting. Adjustments related to the tentative IFF contractual negotiations. adjustments related to the tentative IFF contractual negotiations, some grant and vehicle technology changes within the Police Department, as well as updates to the Risk Fund for our transfers and our year-end projections, which is something that we touched on at the work session. There's also some funding for potential pay plan adjustments for the team members, so those are our temporary and variable classifications. But those will likely come in full at a later date, but we did include funding in the proposed budget to ensure that would be possible. Then revenue changes. So we do have some increases to our state shared revenue in the general fund. There's an increase in the golf course fund revenues based on more updated projections and what the performance is looking like this year. Increases in the penny for Pinellas that we mentioned at the work session, likely coming in higher than we initially had projected, and changes in the county gas tax. So as we learned recently, the county is not moving forward with that potential increase to the county gas tax, and our fund projections were predicated on that, and so we'll be making that adjustment back to where we were. Some pending changes that aren't in the fund projections and in the proposed budget that you saw, again, we did include funding for the team member pay plan changes, some funding, but the full pay plan adjustments are still under development. There's also some discussion around potential solid waste compensation needs. As I mentioned, with the county gas tax fund, that will be updated, and there are a few projects, namely the Rosary Road project that we talked about with the grant funding, that we'll have to just revisit in order to keep on track as we want. And then there is more good news in the general fund, which is, just as of yesterday, we got from our Treasury Manager information that our state shared revenue collections, again, continue to outpace what the state was expecting, and so we're looking at an additional $250,000 this year that's not reflected in anything that we have presented to you today. So that is good news, that those continue to exceed our expectations. So with that, what we've got on the next slides are just recaps from the last meeting, and they're just here for your reference if you need them for your discussion. They are referencing the property tax rate alternatives, as well as the aggregate impact of those rates and utility rate increases. And with that, we are looking for any additional direction or feedback that the Commission has as we prepare the budget for the first reading on September 7.
Thank you. Any questions? Any input? Any requests? Other than Italian ice?
The thunder and lightning.
Great job.
So we will, we will prepare the tentative budget for the first reading with everything that's been included and discussed here, and we'll be back on September 7.
You have to remember, Will.
I know.
Come for the door.
Keep pulling me back in.
With this one right here, is it possible, when you bring it to us, you could have, what options would have to be cut if we went a little lower than what's offered as a suggestion? What would we look for?
As far as expenditure items related to the tax rates?
Yes, yes.
We could certainly outline some of the expenditure items, either in the proposed budget or on the reconciliation list, as well as the fund balance impact. That would be a likely option, would be to adjust the tax rate and just realize a slightly lower fund balance projection for the five years as well.
I'd be interested in that myself.
So the, since Commissioner Smith asked for something, I'll go ahead and put this out there, too. I know the current, the current rate's at 5.62. The next rate on the chart is 5.56 something, something. Perhaps you could put a number in between there, like a nice even number in between those two, to take a look at as well. 5.60, 5.9, no, 5.59, something like that, something in between those two, something maybe that's around that $250,000 that we found yesterday.
Certainly. We can look at that and bring some of those in the meeting.
Since Commissioner Smith asked a question, I'm going to, well, do you have a mechanism in place to capture any feedback you get when the trim notice is hit?
Um, that's a-
Besides the emails we're going to get directly?
That's a great question. We don't have anything directly within the Office of Performance and Budget. We do have our contact information out there, and certainly our contacts of who's available in our office, if anyone wants to weigh in on that, and they can certainly reach out, too.
I'm just thinking, I know oftentimes Kim Adams will say his office gets all the complaints, but if there is a way staff could, you know, assemble those things, so we have some idea of the people who won't come in to talk to us.
Like on the Largo website, hey, your trim notices are coming out, how do you feel?
Your phone has no data connection, so I can't help you with that.
We need, you know, feedback or something.
We can certainly add, you know, work with communications and engagement, just for some continued communication about this next step, which are the meetings and the tax rate, and see if we can get any additional input as it relates to that.
Yeah, I mean, it could be on this financial page, the Financial Center page, if somebody's interested enough-
Yeah.
-that they're, you know, looking at this financial page, they're probably going to be aware of what their trim is and how that affects them.
But a lot of times, that's the first time somebody realizes what's happening, is they get that card to mail.
Yeah. No, I agree, I agree.
Or else they get it and they don't even open it. I know people like that, too. It's like-
I mean, I think it's definitely a good idea to be able to capture those comments as they come in, you know. Might be positive.
And could we, like, we do the notice, the terms coming, something just marketing to let them know, and if they make comments, they're also getting them.
Yeah, we'll certainly reach out to communications, engagement, and coordinate on that.
Something that explains that the trim, the trim notice has the current milit rate, so unchanged milit rate, and we haven't yet decided for sure. And so, but the Commission is committed to either keeping the rate the same or going down, or it can't be any higher, something along that verbiage. And the social media outreach, I think would be good.
But also trying to explain to people that when they get their trim notice, that everything's not coming to Largo. That's a lot of people-
Yeah, that's, like, I pay Largo $3,000. I'm like, no. No, you don't.
All right. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. So we'll bring all of this information back for the September 7 meeting. We'll do a little engagement before then regarding the trim notices and provide some of those options around the tax rate for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any board or committee reports?
I just wanted to, I checked the training letter yesterday for rank and file through the COC, and on August 23, we will be determining, actually doing the rank and file for Tier 1 and Tier 2 products, projects. We had 16 applicants this year, so I believe this Friday we'll be getting the list of the applicants and doing our preliminary ranking and filing. And then August 23 will be the actual meeting. And how many was? $4,637,000. That will be distributed amongst these agencies. So if you're interested in that, that should be, I believe that it's usually a public meeting. Right now, I think they kind of have it as a, if you're an interested party, you can attend it. But I'll let you know for sure at the next meeting whether it is in fact an open meeting. Thank you.
And with Ford Pinellas, we have a legislative delegation meeting tomorrow. I unfortunately can't attend, so Vice Mayor Robinson's going to fill in for me, and Carson's going to fill in to get as much information we can. The goal behind this was the chair of our legislative, or Councilmember Gabbert came up with the idea of being more proactive with our reps on items relating to transportation and land use, and trying to see where they are. It's kind of what we're looking at to do here when we meet with them, but hopefully that gets some really productive information out of there. And I thank Vice Mayor Robinson for filling in for me.
Yeah, yeah. So tomorrow at 10, Route Deckard Hall is the meeting, or it starts at 10. So we're going to talk about housing, transportation, investing more in transportation, and finding some flexible funding, safe streets in Pinellas, and as well as resilient, you know, in sea level rise, which coincidentally are several of the priorities for the Suncoast League of Cities this year. So it'll work out well, because I'm also not only representing Largo, but the Suncoast League of Cities at this meeting tomorrow. So I'm looking forward to that. And then I have a couple of other, if I may, for PSTA and the Suncoast League.
Please, go ahead.
August 13, the Suncoast League will be holding our monthly business meeting at the conference in Orlando. I'll make sure it's 12:15 to 12:45. I don't have the information on the room yet, but I will make sure that once I receive it, everybody gets it, for any of us that are going to be in Orlando at the conference. That's the 3rd, Friday the 13th. Should be a good time. So, but that's from 12:15 to 12:45, 30 minutes, just to kind of, you know, approve our priorities for the upcoming legislative session. And then also, for us that are attending the conference, the Suncoast, the Tri-County, and the Volusia Leagues are all having our annual breakfast again. That will be in the Grand Ballroom 8 at 7:30 on August 14. And if you haven't, you know, accepted the invitation yet, Carson, if you can resend that, if you have it, or just make sure that everybody has that invitation. So just so you can RCP, we, you know, want to make sure we have food for everybody, so. PSTA, we, similar to City of Largo, published the trim at .75, which is the max that PSTA is allowed to leverage. The Sunrunner, Bus Rapid Transit, is coming along very well for, that runs from St. Pete to Pasadena and St. Pete Beach. 17 out of the 30 platforms have been completed. I think everything in St. Pete, St. Pete Beach and Pasadena has been completed, and now they're in the downtown St. Pete for that. The nine BRT buses have been delivered, and they project that it should be up and running in summer of next year, 2022. That's all I have for those.
Thank you. I had a Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council meeting yesterday. I wanted to make sure you all mark your calendars. The Regional Resiliency Conference hosted by the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council will be, actually, it's the Resiliency Coalition that will be hosting that. It will be on January 27 and 28. We're still kind of in the process of determining what portion of that's going to be in person, whether we'll have a reduced capacity, or whether it's going to be open to 300, 350 people. We'll know that in the next couple of months. We anticipate that we'll probably have in-person, we prefer to have in-person, but we may have some virtual attendance as well. And that is the 27th and 28th of January next year. We had a presentation on fertilizer ban, if you may not know this, but we're one of, I think we're the only county in the Tampa Bay region that disallows the sale of fertilizer during the rainy season. One of the main problems with algae blooms, and red tide is an algae bloom, is the runoff of fertilizer from yards and golf courses and people that use fertilizer during the rainy season. So Hillsborough County attempted just recently to put a ban in place, and the state preempted them and said, you can't put a ban in place for the sale of fertilizer. You can put a ban in for the use, but people can still go and buy fertilizer. And so they want to-
So here in Pinellas County, if I'm, and maybe I'm mistaken, but what I remember from when I used to sell fertilizer was you can, you can't sell it, anything that has nitrogen in it year-round, right? And then either potassium or phosphate, I believe, is banned through, from June through September. Is that correct? Or maybe-
So, no. I mean, certainly, Alan left, so don't quote me on this, but I think that anything that contains, any fertilizer for broad application, you can buy like a fertilizer stick, but any fertilizer for broad application, you can't purchase during that rainy season. I don't know the exact dates. Unless it's like an organic fertilizer, if it's like, you know, ground-up peat or whatever, you can buy that stuff. But, you know, what you think of Scotts fertilizer that you put on your lawn.
Yeah, you're right.
So that's my belief. I know that there are some, the City of Tampa got in under the wire on the state preemption, but we've talked about, at the Regional Planning Council, we've talked about having a regional ban. For every piece of dirt that touches the Tampa Bay estuary, we should, we should limit fertilizer. And you're not going to limit fertilizer application by limiting application. You're going to limit it by limiting availability, which is sales. So that's one of the things that we're going to be pushing for with the state legislature moving forward. Either allow us as a region to deal with this, or, you know, make it so you can't buy fertilizer in the state during that month, or those months.
Do golf courses fall under the same ban?
I think they do, but I don't, don't quote me on that. I know, I know, maybe they don't. I know that commercial applications do. So landscapers and pest control companies that put on fertilizer, they're not allowed to purchase it either or buy it.
So I think, and again, obviously I was wrong just a second ago, but I think golf courses are still allowed to use it, and I'm not sure, but if that is the case, that would absolutely be something, I mean, golf courses are by far, in this area, in Pinellas County for sure, the biggest users of fertilizer, you know, would be used, you know, quite a bit more than any commercial distribution or whatever that might be.
Yeah, we should certainly look into that. And also, even if it's not an outright ban for that time, take a strong look at their practices, how close to, how close to water bodies and things that end up out in Tampa Bay.
I know in Pinellas County, like, you can't use any type of fertilizer with nitrogen year-round, which obviously is one of the biggest producers of, it has, so it's a, you know, there's the numbers for, on the fertilizer, you can't have nitrogen in it year-round. So, and on a, on a, on a regular basis, so for your residential and commercial use, and again, I'm not sure what the, the golf courses are, you know, where do they fall on there, but, but, you know, you can't have anything with nitrogen in it. So, and again, the reason being is because obviously nitrogen is the biggest, you know, help for any type of algae bloom. And then the outright ban through the months of June through September, because those are the rainy seasons when all of that fertilizer is then going to wash off into the bed. So, yeah, I think, I completely agree with everything that you guys are trying to do, and it would be fantastic to be able to have some type of regional ban on fertilizer, because otherwise, you know, all the other efforts and mitigation efforts that we're trying to do are, we're not going to ever get to the point where we need to, to be able to get rid of or very much reduce the amount of red tide that we get.
Right. And so we had another discussion about red tide, and I'll get to that in a second, but the first presentation was about seagrass in Tampa Bay, and I think I talked about this last month, we had, after an agency on Bay Management meeting. But the gentleman from the Tampa Bay Estuary Program talked about the reduction in seagrasses in Tampa Bay. We were above our goal in 2016 and did, we're doing really well, way up from the 60s and 70s as far as seagrass population in Tampa Bay, and we're back below the goal. So we've gone down for two studies in a row. They do a study every two years. So these numbers are from pre-Piney Point, so they're before the big phosphate dump into Tampa Bay. But there's a significant reduction mostly in Old Tampa Bay, and there's a lot of things that kind of contribute to that, but one, the main one is the water latency. It doesn't flow real well because there's two big causeways that go across Tampa Bay. So one of the things that I suggested we might do at the meeting is talk to DOT about potentially adding some ways for water to flow on the western side of the causeway, like they did on the Court to Campbell Causeway, to allow for more flow from the Feather Sound area and from other areas where there's a little bit of a stagnant eddy and the water doesn't leak, it just stays there. And it drops in, it drops into oxygen and ends up with algae. There's a persistent algae bloom that's not red tide in Old Tampa Bay every year. It's been, it's been like one out the last 10 years that hasn't been there in the summertime. It doesn't, it's not toxic, it doesn't kill a lot of stuff, but it clouds the water, so it kills seagrass. We talked about- We talked about red tide as well, red tide's also an algae, but it's a toxic, it produces toxins to fish and to people. And red tide is more salinity dependent than, than a lot of algies. So this year, red tide is much more in Tampa Bay. If you remember, early in the summertime, we didn't have any rain for a month, right? So the salinity of Tampa Bay was, was high, it was almost as high as the Gulf, so it allowed for the red tide to move up. The only time that red tide has been in that density in Tampa Bay was like in 1965 and so, and I didn't know, I don't know if anybody remembers if it rained a lot in 1965, but my guess would be that it didn't. So a lot of things happened, salinity was real high in Tampa Bay, Piney Point dumped 205 tons of nitrogen into Tampa Bay, as well as a lot of phosphorus and Corinna brevis, which is red tide, really likes phosphorus, it's one of its, likes that to eat, so I think that's a large, was certainly the reason there was such a bloom in Tampa Bay, inside the bay. You know, this, this time of year, in many years, we have red tide blooms off the coast. So, so I think it's, it's important and we're going to continue to work with this Resiliency Coalition to, to reduce contributor, contributors of nitrogen and phosphorus to Tampa Bay. And I'm not sure what the answer is for like the Piney Points of the state, so that's my long, short report on the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. Any other? All right, Commissioner Carroll.
A couple of things, first of all, thank you for your support while my wife and I recovered from our breakthrough case, it was a situation that I wouldn't wish on, but maybe a handful of people... But not fun, but we made it, so thank you. Henry, I had a question from last week's meeting during public comment, there was a comment that was sent in anonymously and read into the record. Don't we, don't we discount anonymous submissions like that? I mean, we have speakers that have to give their name and everything at the podium, I wondered if, I seem to recall some reference to accepting anonymous...
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall if we have a specific policy on that or not, we can look into it.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Couldn't make a code complaint that way, so...
Right.
And then the final thing is, I was telling the Vice Mayor that I asked Carson to send a copy of that release on Mac and Shirley's passing to the Florida League of Cities for their quality cities magazine, so if anyone else was thinking of doing that, Carson already took care of it, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
We did the, like, the city manager talked about the COVID vaccination site pop up at the library, it was a good turnout, so I decided to stay, figured if I'm going to be at one library for the day off, I'll go to another, or day off, I'll enjoy it. People really, it was really nice to see people coming in and they were cordial and they were, a lot of them saying it was time, but take it serious and the other thing is respect, take, respect to your healthcare providers, please, they're going through a lot of stress right now, I know y'all, citizens are also, but listen to what they have to say and take it all with a grain of salt, but at the same time, be courteous to each other and them, they're trying to get through it just like us and just don't take it out on them, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Robbins?
Just one thing real quick, I just want to talk, today Henry and I had a discussion and one of the things we discussed was, I had a conversation yesterday with Mike Sutton and Sean King from Habitat for Humanity to discuss some of the efforts that we've done here in the City of Largo for, towards affordable housing, I know we had a conversation last week about affordable housing and, you know, the compact that we're doing in Pinellas County and, and I guess from Habitat's perspective anyhow, unfortunately, many of the efforts that we have done are focused kind of on apartment or multifamily housing and obviously that's not generally the type of housing that Habitat is building, so they don't, they aren't able to really reap some of the benefits that we are providing, or we're trying to provide for other, other situations. So I had Sean King, who is their, their policy person and legislative liaison, to kind of just, you know, recap our discussion. I forwarded the email to Henry and I'm sure, obviously, this just happened today, so he hasn't had any opportunity to really follow up on it and I know we'll have, he'll have a conversation with our housing department and community development, but my only, I kind of go through all that to say, I would like to continue that conversation to make sure we're able to provide as many opportunities as possible in the affordable housing realm to all of the folks that are providing affordable housing. Potentially, if some of the things, you know, are put in place that Habitat is talking about, we could potentially put 70 units of homeowners in the City of Largo through some, through, you know, just a little bit of revision of some of the ordinances and things we have in place right now.
So they have specific...
They have some specific ask, yeah, and again, Henry has those, I've had the discussion with them, you know, I don't know if Henry, if after you've had the discussion with staff, if maybe you could kind of have them recap some of these things, or I'd be, I don't have a problem sending this out to the, to the rest of the commission, or I can send it to Carson and he can...
Yeah, I'll have, I'll send it to Carson to send out to everybody and I think it's probably topics that would be great for our Affordable Housing Committee to look at.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree 100% with that as well and then maybe, maybe, you know, I know that's going to continue to have that conversation, but I also would like for, you know, if those recommendations come back or whatever, definitely at some point have the conversation with this commission and, you know, maybe bring in Habitat and whoever else that we need to, to continue to have that conversation because again, I think, you know, obviously, any type of affordable housing is great, but long-term is obviously going to be a better benefit for the homeowner as well as the City of Largo, you know, to have those, those options available, so my two cents on that and that's all I had for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gerard?
First of all, I want to thank everybody for being so understanding during our conversation about masks. It's just good to be able to have a conversation like this and share ideas. Henry and I also had a conversation today about outreach to people who would like to get vaccinated but don't have the opportunity, people who can't take time off from work or can't travel or are stuck at home with children that they can't bring with them and we shared some ideas about maybe getting out to larger employers or to work sites or construction sites. I know it's not something the city can do on its own, but I'd love to see us maybe get with the county and see if there's some way that we, we can do that because there are people who want to get vaccinated, they're just not able to right now and there's, that's a sizable group of folks, so if we can look into that, I think that would be wonderful and that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holt?
After our lively meeting last week, we kind of, were kind of a little short on, on comments at the end and I wanted to welcome the officers that were pinned last week because I kind of got left out, but welcome to Largo.
Good thing they got out of there before.
Yeah, yeah, so, but that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Feger?
I've had a, I forgot to ask city manager today and I may have overlooked it, but I saw something advertised about national night out and I didn't know if we were participating. Usually we've done, PD is, you know, been in the neighborhood, I know, a little different this year with COVID, but has been in, you know, specific areas, neighborhoods that they've picked, but I have, I don't know if I've seen anything.
No, I don't recall seeing anything either, I'll look into that, but yeah, we always participate every year, so...
Yeah, I just caught it somewhere, advertised.
She just laughed like two minutes ago.
I know.
Hold back.
Thank you.
Thank you, the only other thing I had is I'm going to send you all that Phoenix 2.0, I think I talked about, did I send that last time?
Yeah, yes, you did, the video was fantastic, yeah.
I don't know if you all, I mean, it's kind of late, I guess it's not that late in the hurricane season, but I think that's worth maybe playing during a work session so that it plays on Largo TV and so our residents can see it, or maybe put it, put it on the city's Facebook page or something like that.
I think both.
Yeah.
Both, okay. I think it's a great, that's, in my opinion, you know, obviously that's how it was modeled, but, but what happened up in the panhandle would be exactly what happened here and, and not to, you know, but I drove through there several months after that hurricane happened and it is, it was at that time a just disaster. And, and it's, the panhandle was just destroyed by that, you know, that, that particular area, the panhandle and it's a good reminder for, for all of us here to what really would happen in the event that that happens here. So yeah, I think it's, it's a great opportunity for us to put, to promote it as much as we can.
Yes, so if we have some time, I mean, it's, I think it's about 18 minutes total. So if we have some time in an upcoming work session, if not, let's plan on June next year to play it coming into...
Can we get some Jeremiah's ice in here and we just sit back like, we talked about having a movie theater style, right? Let's just get that started early.
Yeah, maybe get in a little early, you know, just...
May I just add, it just was funny to me that in talking about having the electric vehicle chargers, how it may be important, especially in apartment complexes and stuff, is because while walking, living in one, while walking my dogs during daylight, there were three very small childlike cones sitting on the sidewalk and I was like, okay, whatever. But when I went out at nighttime, those cones were there because I almost killed myself because they had part, they wanted their, their cord to feed into their apartment and they thought the three little cones would, I guess, notify you that their, their cord was at your head level. I know, funny, not funny, but, right? So I was like, there's a cord, like that, and that's a very thick cord too, yeah, and you don't...
It was elevated?
Yes, so, but the cones, like I said, were child cones and so there's no way that in, you would go, oh right, I should look up here for the cord that just about cut my head off, yes, so it made me think about how if a compact area needs to have a, a place where they charge their vehicles and not have it...
Oh, they're running an extension cord to the house to their car.
Yes, to their car, yes, without any notice other than, other than the little cones. So when I came around at night, knowing the cones were there, you're just looking, you're not like, oh my God, I just had my head cut off by the cord that they were running all the way from the parking lot to...
To their apartment.
Third floor.
Generator.
Right!
That's a slow charging process too.
It is.
Very slow charging.
Just unplug it.
Like, twice like...
Yes, you should have just unplugged it and I'm done.
I have to follow where it went.
They get out on Tuesday morning and be like, uh.
Hey Mayor, I was, the Vice Mayor talked about affordable housing thing that brought to mind, have you seen the advertisements for the pre-construction townhomes downtown?
I have, yeah.
The pricing?
Yes, it's not affordable.
Three-story ones?
Yeah, five, five...
Five sixty.
Five sixty.
Start.
They start at five sixty.
But we, we spent a lot of...
And an elevator is optional.
We spent a lot of time a couple of years ago talking about our, you know, that average value of a home in Largo and those kind of numbers are going to change that, you know, just like the ones down on 14th and Mellonbacher.
Yeah.
Beautiful floor plane.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Has anybody seen the house nearby there that, that it was, it was a forec, a low, a code enforcement lean foreclosure house that had been abandoned for a long time, the roof was falling in and the city purchased it and then we went out for RFP on a bid. Well, that house is looking, it's fully enclosed and stuff, it looks really nice.
Oh, is it? I'll have to go there.
I buy there, it's 511 Cleveland.
Okay.
I don't even know the name of the, the construction person that purchased it from the city, but, but it looks really, really nice, it's block, full two stories.
Wow.
Which you don't see that at all.
Right, yes.
Mr. Schuber, what do you have?
Thankfully, nothing.
All right.
Come on, man.
I had any action items?
Yes, I have three things. A request by Commissioners Gerard and Smith that individual city facilities be monitored for spikes in COVID-19 cases and keep the city commission informed, a request by Commissioner Gerard that the city work with Pinellas County on, oh shoot, vaccination sites, oh, did I say that right, or was it partnerships? Vaccination, okay. And a request by Mayor Brown that the Phoenix 2.0 video be played during a work session or put on the city's Facebook page or both.
Yep, sounds good. Anything? Beings adjourned.